All right. Good morning. Thank you for joining us at the Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. We do have Chair Steck joining us via Zoom today, so you'll hear his voice periodically. We don't have a video feed of him. But with that, I'd like to call our meeting to order. And Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioners Green,
here.
Antor, Merchant,
here.
DeBoer,
here.
Hildenbrand, Ponstein,
here.
Burl,
here.
Coleman,
here.
Vice Chair Breavy,
here.
Commissioners Teal, Sparks,
present.
McLeod,
here.
Hennessy,
here.
Oliver King, LaGrand,
here.
Baker,
here.
Woodin,
here.
Pakla,
here.
Diaz,
here.
Boojak,
present.
Chair Steck.
I am here in Rockwood, Michigan.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 members present, three absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk. And I just want to make this statement too regarding the virtual participation. Pursuant to the opinion of the Michigan Attorney General that the Open Meeting Act is subject to the Americans with Disabilities Act and requests for accommodation having been made, in a case specific reviews have been completed, it has been determined that remote participation is a reasonable accommodation for Chair Stan Steck this morning. And Stan had noted his location during the road call. Thank you. All right. And we have Commissioner Sparks with the invocation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As we approach the great architect of the universe, I'd like to offer something a little different this morning. Matthew 6:9 through 13 and Luke 11 will be sung by my brother, Craig Tyson.
Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy holy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever, O man!
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America,
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. That was beautiful. Thank you for that. So our next item on the agenda is the Special Order of Business. And we have our Treasurer, Pete McGregor, here to give the Treasurer's annual report. Thanks for joining us this morning, Pete.
Good morning. I'm going to sing this one. No, I'm kidding. You don't want to hear me sing, trust me. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to present a performance review of the Kent County Treasurer's Office. I know I have 10 minutes, so I'm going to try and go through my slides quite quickly. But if you have any questions, maybe at the end we have time to go a little deeper on any one of those items that I'm going to be reviewing with you. Again, I invite you to come to my office, learn more about any one of these issues. There are some issues that I'm going to go a little bit deeper on, but if you want to learn what the Treasurer's Office does, we will welcome anybody to come on in and kind of give you a little bit more. And that includes the public as well as the Board of Commissioners. So this is kind of the overview that we're going to be going over. Just to start, these are the mission and kind of my basic responsibilities. So the mission of the Office of the County Treasurer is to collect the lodging excise and delinquent real property taxes and manage the county funds within relative laws, regulations, policies, and community standards. And then my responsibilities come from the state constitution, and also they're mandated through state statute as well. And I try and protect all interests of all taxpayers, so those that are having trouble paying their taxes, as well as those who are timely with their property taxes. You've seen this slide before. This is the county strategic alignment slide. Basically, I want to review a little bit about my team. We are currently 12 strong. You can see we're down since I took office by two, but that's good. I mean, we're running very lean, and we are a very strong team. We're down a total eight from 2008. So a lot of it has to do with we're just doing things more efficiently, but also technology has helped out a ton. There are probably many departments that can go almost 50% of personnel, but we're doing it in the Treasurer's Office. Our supporting roles, everybody thinks we collect taxes, and we do, and invest the tax dollars. But these are all the other of the supporting roles. We have tax settlement, where we do the investment. We're kind of the bank for the county. We do property tax adjustments, revenue intake, foreclosure prevention. We have two individuals in our office who are bilingual, and I think everybody on the first floor uses those services, and it's very helpful for our customers. And then also, we provide customer service, walk-in on the phone through email as well. So our office members, their service time ranges from about two years to 28 years. And it's a wealth of information that these individuals have. My two deputies that are here with me, my senior deputy and my finance deputy, they're sitting right here in the front row, Steve and Jennifer. So more than often, if you ask me a question and you see like I'm a little confused, I usually go to them, and they help us out. So you can just bypass me and go to them if you really want to. They're the ones, Jennifer, I think, has been with us for about 12 years, 13 years, and Steve, 28 years. So if he hasn't come across it, no one has. So I'm fortunate to have them on my team. And we do both customer service for our internal customers in all the different departments, as well as external customers. These are our three basic strategic goals. To invest funds that are entrusted to our office through our investment policy and state statute. We collect the lodging taxes, and we collect the delinquent real property taxes in accordance with state statute. So getting into our investment summary. Normally, in the wintertime, usually February, March, I come in and I kind of give you an overview of our investments. So I'm not going to get too deep into here, but these are just kind of some slides that talk about what we do involving our investments. But you can see that the objective is to not lose money, plain and simple. And we don't, and we never have. And it's because we have these guiding principles. We have the SLY principle, which I go over in our investment policy. But SLY is an acronym for Safety, Liquidity, and Yield. And it's weighted much towards safety and liquidity. It's not my money. It's not our money. It's the people's money. So we have to make sure that our investments are super safe, and we're guided by the principles of PA 20, which is the state statute, and then also our county investment policy. And sometimes our county investment policies, or county investment policies in general, can be more strict than PA 20 as well. So this is a slide that, well, it didn't, this is the wrong slide, but I'll go over this slide. I changed this up. So this tells you that all the general fund dollars that come in, you know, we make sure, these are numbers that talk about, oh, no, excuse me. I apologize. I'm two slides ahead. This is the investment income slide. So I'm already trying to get to 10 minutes for you, so I apologize. So what this shows is how dismal our investment income was over the last few years. At 1%, sometimes lower than 1% return on our investments, you could see that '21 and '22 were not good years, especially in the bond market. But here, this shows you, if you look at the bottom, the interest income, you can see September 30th of this year, we're already at $1.7 million of interest income, and that's more than combining '21 and '22 together. So we're rebounding just because the interest rates are much higher. And you can see that there's a, you can see the percentage layout of where our funds are. The 520, that's the breakout of CDs all the way down to U.S. Treasury notes there. We still have a county pool. We're one of two counties that provide the county pool. And we have 12 townships, four cities, and six authorities that are involved with that pool, and it's about $72.5 million. The lodging excise tax, it's definitely rebounded since 2020. This is something that I know our CAA and experienced Grand Rapids discuss with you in detail. We're already on track to either hit or meet or increase what we did in 2022. And just a note at the bottom there, you can see that Airbnb is our third-largest revenue generator when it comes to lodging tax, just behind the Amway and the JW. Property tax settlement. So most of you know, but if you don't, what happens in March is that the property settlements with the local units come over to the county. So March 1st, all their delinquent accounts come to the county, and we turn around and make them whole. And that's when I come in front of you and ask you for a note for, you know, these amounts, 16 million, 15 million, I think last year was 13 million, because we're making the locals whole so they can continue the services. Our schools, our millages, our townships, our cities, all of them are made whole so they can continue to provide the needed services for the people in Kent County. We turn around, we become the collection agent. So I don't have much control over this number. In fact, I have zero control. The only thing that controls this is the economy. So when the economy is doing poorly, this number will go up. When tax rates go up, when millage rates go up, when the cost of inflation goes up, when we add millages, this puts stress on property owners. So I'm not telling you how to do your business, but decisions made in this room will affect this number, and I can't control that number. That's the economy. But we handle it. Because we, my team has been, since day one, I have told my team that we are not in the business to foreclose on homes. We're in the business to collect taxes. So anything I can do to prevent foreclosure, we're going to figure it out. And these are some of the items that we've been doing for foreclosure prevention. I am required to foreclose on properties that don't pay their taxes, and that system, or that process is about a three-year process. Unless they're able to come in and work with my office and my team, we can give extensions. We can find them resources. We can set up payment programs. They can make partial payments. So if the worst-case scenario comes, and we do have to foreclose, we also provide them assistance with a new law called 78T. And that new law is at the bottom bullet point there. And that allows someone that if they've lost their home, and we have sold it in the auction, and if they only owe X amount, but we sell it for much higher than X amount, then we can help them gain those or return those proceeds to them. This kind of talks about the last three years in our foreclosure process. If you see at the bottom, foreclosures for 2023. It's kind of a record for us. I'm very proud of that, having only 13 parcels that we foreclosed on. Boy, if you look at the past five years, the average is about 54 parcels. And if you look at the past 10 years, the average is about over 140 parcels that we've been foreclosing on. And I attribute this to our prevention program, getting out, talking to the people, figuring out what their problem is, and trying to help them and get them resources. This is something that you can look at your leisure. This is kind of the timeline. Foreclosure is a three-year process. Most of my work is in the second and third year, and then we can help people out in that fourth year if we do foreclose on their property. Credit card and electronic payments. This is, it seems super simple, but we haven't collected taxes using credit cards since, we've only been doing it for three years. So it's fairly new. But you can see that it's been super convenient for the people in Kent County to use this. You know, we have to make sure that we comply with the PCI security standards, and that's kind of the hiccup a lot of times, because you wish you could just take a credit card over the phone. You can't. You've got to follow the rules. It's security rules. But out of the $18 million that we collected in 2022, a third of them were through our new credit card system. And if you see that the third bullet there, you can see how many actually did it at the counter, online, and who did it through ACH or actually paid the 2.35 or the 2.98 percentage on there. So most people will do an ACH because it's free, and it's very convenient. Looking ahead, I'll talk about this a little bit later, but being able to take credit card over the phone and have off-site or remote payments. Our biggest complaint in our office is parking and having to come downtown. I think the Clerk is nodding because she has the same thing. And if people can go to a Meyer or a family fair or Walmart and pay their taxes, that would be beautiful. And we're working with our credit card system to be able to do something like that. They're doing it in other states, and we're trying to replicate that. So I'm looking forward to that. Some significant accomplishments. Again, our bilingual tax statements, notices, newsletters are new in the last 12 to 18 months. I've had a couple conversations with our friends, Gustavo and others, about how helpful that is. There's a lot of people that English is their second language, and speaking it is hard enough. Reading it is even harder. And anything that I mail out or send out now is in both English and Spanish, and I think it's huge. Just that communication has helped us out and also helped out the customers that are going through kind of a difficult time with their property taxes. The MIHAF program, which is the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund, has done awesome for our citizens that have had trouble with their property taxes. You can read a little bit about that. Of course, I'm not going to get too deep into the AAA. You all know how awesome it is, but we're involved with the AAA bond rating. Just have a little note there that I think in the Human Resource Committee, Jeff talked about the amount of money that is saved by having a AAA bond rating from our airports, even down to our Drain Commissioner and the smaller projects. So it saves tax dollars to the citizens. Looking ahead, don't want to go too deep into legal statements, because I know Linda will say, "Don't talk about that stuff up here." But I just, there's a lot of stuff going on with what's required by the County Treasurer. 99% of what I do is written in statute. But yet, there's so many lawsuits that have been going on in the last three years. And I just want to keep that on your radar, that it's unfortunate that the blame comes to the county. The responsibility and liability sits on our shoulders, yet we're just following state statute. So we continue to work with our friends in Lansing and see if we can't make that better. But, you know, we have cases that are in the federal court, in the circuit court, the appeals, the Supreme Court. And a lot of it has to do with fair market value, first right of refusal. And the biggest one that I have concerns about is the retroactivity of any new laws that change. Going backwards, it's going to be a lot harder than prospectively moving forward. Good news is that we've had some good outcomes. Muskegon County just had a Court of Appeals issued a published decision in this last October in favor of the county treasurer's and that whole timeline and that process of that new law, that 78T law that I talked about earlier. Credit card payments, I already told you about those and the remote payments. Home Repair Services is a wonderful resource that we use quite often, and we've got together with them. We're going to do three educational financial seminars called Financial Fridays, and that they're going to discuss with their clientele. Homeownership, real property tax, foreclosure prevention, which is just another way to communicate you don't have to be foreclosed on. There's so many ways to make sure that that doesn't happen. That's the worst-case scenario. And of course, the worst-case scenario is if we do foreclose, we go through the new law, the MCL 21178T, which is the remaining proceeds. And we're trying to figure out ways where people don't have to hire an attorney to go through this process. The attorney's going to take a third of whatever is left over. And if they can get all of what's left over, that's even better. And we have resources for these people to be able to do that. And again, we continue to build our relationships with Community Action, especially in their Senior Service Division, as well as the Hispanic Center of West Michigan. Here are some of our key collaborations that we continue to work with. There's a whole list of them. I won't review them. And that is it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good timing. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, and thank you also for sharing this foreclosure information at the quadrant meetings. I found that really helpful and great to know that our foreclosures are on the decrease. I had just a few questions from the slides. You mentioned a one-time deferral that people might be able to take advantage of. How long is that deferral?
The standard time is 12 months, one year.
Okay.
And, but that's just part of it. I mean, we sit down and work out a payment plan for them. We let them decide what they can afford. So whether it's weekly, monthly, quarterly, we try and get them resources. We connect them with other areas. So it's just, we're going to give you a year to help you figure this out. You know, people get ill, they lose their jobs, they get divorced. There's issues going on, and we're very, very aware of that. That's the one thing that I have the ability to do, is give someone more time. And it really depends on how actively they're working at it. And of course, you come the next year, you may have been paying off the previous year, but it's like laundry. It's every year. Laundry's every day. Dishes are every day. Property taxes are going to come every year, unfortunately. I guess fortunately. Depends how you look at it, right? So when we set up those payment plans, we try and set them up where you're going to be paying for two years at a time, because you don't want to be back in the same hole again. But then there's times when people going through probate and bankruptcy and other things, that we have the ability to extend that more time. And that's just communicating. Let's have a discussion. What works? I don't want to foreclose on, I don't want anybody's home. I don't want any property. I don't want anybody's business. I don't want, I just want the taxes paid, so we can continue to provide the services that are needed.
And on the slide where you were showing the decreased number of yearly foreclosures, there was a reference to surplus claims. Could you just explain what that is, the surplus claims?
Yeah. So this is that new law, 78T, where if I foreclose, someone can claim any surplus. So if the county is made whole on the auction of your property, for example, if we sell your property for $100,000, yet you owe $50,000, then there's a surplus of $50,000 in there that they can claim. But that's done through our judicial system, and a judge makes that determination. But there's a seven-step process of doing that. We help them through that process to make sure they get the money that's due. You know, we're not, my office isn't in the business of any takings or trying to make, we just want to be whole. And anything extra should go to those property owners, parcel owners.
So the 10 claims, for example, in 2023, that's 10 of the 13 parcels?
Yes, but it could be, you could have more than one claim on one parcel.
Oh, okay.
So anybody who has a lien or a claim on a parcel can present that surplus claim on that. So I think in 2022, we had 11 claims, and the state of Michigan was like five of those claims.
Okay. And then my last question is, I love this Financial Fridays that you're talking about, being able to share. And I'm wondering, how can we share that with our constituents? Is there?
Yeah, I will, because we're still trying to work out some details with Home Repair Services. I'll make sure that our communications department is plugged in so that we can get it, because I think it's, because Home Repair Services helps people who own homes. There's other nonprofits that help out renters in other areas, but people who own homes need help, especially if you inherit this home. And there's a lot of responsibility owning a home, we all know. And paying your taxes is one of them, and that's the one that usually bites people more often than not. So, yeah. And anybody who has any ideas on how to help me with foreclosure prevention, I'm all ears. I really am. I'm open to that, because it's a bad feeling when you have to foreclose on somebody. Out of the 13, four of those were homes. So the other nine were just vacant lots. So some of them junk lots. So that's even better, that really we only affected a very, very small amount of people.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Pete.
Hi.
Couple of things. You had mentioned we have like a snapshot time. Right now, we're at about 3.69% of the rate of return on our investments. Is that across the board with all of our investment?
No, because it's all about liquidity. And so we have, in cash flow, we need to know, and that's why when decisions are made up here to spend money, I need to know as soon as possible. We still have, I think, $50,000, close to $50,000, $50 million that we haven't spent for the ARPA dollars?
70, I believe.
70 million that we haven't spent yet. But we need to know when that's coming in. So we kind of stagger and ladder out these investments. So some of them are still at .8, especially if a bank had locked us in, and we can't break that contract with a bank. We try and stay away from those, but some of those were before my time. And .8 was pretty good two years ago. Now we're closer to 5, between 5 and 6%. So as they mature and come in, whether they're bonds or CDs or others, you know, we're laddering them out, but we're laddering them out depending on our cash flow needs. So sometimes it's three months, sometimes it's six months, sometimes it's a year. I don't think we go much beyond five years. But that's, it's a balance between cash flow needs, the ability to be able to pull it out as quick as possible, and then earning some yield.
Okay. Well, that kind of answers my other question about whether most of these are fixed or variable. Sounds like it's kind of a mixed bag right now.
It is. And you could see how many different ways we're investing. And last year, when I presented in front of the board for the financials investments, we were so lopsided with the bond market, because the CDs weren't paying anything, and the bond market was close to five CDs. The banks take forever to catch up. Well, they've caught up now, and they're starving for cash right now. They weren't a year ago, but they are now. So that's, these numbers that will change, these percentages will change year to year.
Okay. Now, just a couple of other things real quick. You mentioned regarding foreclosures that we have some resources. Are most of those resources just people, businesses, groups that can help people kind of get their stuff together, or is there actually financial resources available?
Both, both. So my half is financial. You know, you could go to DHHS for some financial resources, but other ones help you with your lifestyle, so that maybe we can free up some money, so then you can pay your taxes, especially with the seniors. If we can show them that there's ways to cut costs in this bucket, maybe it frees up some money to be able to pay for your taxes. So there's not one silver bullet or one way to do it. You've got to look at the individual. We got to, and that's key, is looking at these people and figuring out their situation, not just looking at a piece of paper and saying, oh, they owe, we're going to fore- not just looking at a piece of paper and saying, oh, they owe, we're going to foreclose. So I actually go out and I knock doors and I try and explain, hey, there has to be a problem because in nine out of 10 times, I'm welcomed in. But there's a few times where I probably shouldn't have gone there, but I'll take that chance.
Yeah, I was curious if part of the tools in the two bag would be trying to convince some of the people that are habitually late or whatever, maybe aren't aware of like tax escrow accounts.
So I have one example real quick, and I know I'm going over my time. I owed Jeff a beer because I went longer than he did. So, I mean, a cup of coffee, that's what I meant, a cup of coffee. So I went to a lady's house who owed on 21 taxes. She paid her 22 taxes. So when she got, when she called the city of Grand Rapids, they said, no, you don't owe any money. Well, there's a little star there on the screen that says, you know, there's past due with the county, but she heard she doesn't owe any money. Well, she missed the 21 tax, so we were going to foreclose on her. I knocked on her door and she says, I don't owe any money. And I'm like, well, yes, you do. And I kind of explained, you know, after a year of delinquency, it comes over to the county and you owe the county. We've been sending you statements. Oh, I didn't understand. I mean, so people just don't understand. When you get stuff in the mail, especially from the government, it goes to the bottom and some people forget or don't care, but you never want to get something in the mail from me. If you get something in the mail from me, that's not good.
I know escrow accounts are very valuable if people do that because over time, you kind of forget about it and it's tax season, it doesn't matter. The initial few months payments, it, you know, makes you blink a little bit, but that would be.
Well, and everybody delays. I mean, procrastination is exact, I mean, I procrastinate on my taxes as much as possible because you don't want the government to have your money, right? Basic.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Peter, good to see you. As I said in my email to you a little ways back, I really do want to give you your props, especially hearing those numbers of the 10-year average and where we are now. Your office and your team definitely deserves it. To your point of, you know, getting ideas on how we can even reduce those numbers further, there are some community members who have reached out to me and we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow. They want to talk about a housing millage. And I know that you said that millages in general put more stress on property owners. But I think if there's a way that everybody in the county, all the property owners can essentially have each other's back, and if we can construct a housing millage that would help those people who are in the most need, I think that's a worthwhile conversation. So I'll probably end up reaching out to you and see if you can give me your input on that.
Yeah, and just to answer that real quickly, I don't mean to interrupt. There are ways, if you're, the city, any of the cities and any of the townships can give exemptions, not just for 100% disabled veterans, but poverty exemptions, they can get deferrals. There's a lot of different things that just don't get communicated, especially from the locals, because they want their taxes. Because if you don't pay them, I'll pay them. That's, so they're made whole either way. So they don't always share that information, which I'm happy to share it because now I'm in charge of collection and I want, I just want to get them collected.
Right, right, for sure. And also props for actually being willing to go out into the community and knock on those doors because I had a conversation yesterday where there was some organized constituent services in my district and some different government entities asking me my opinion on how they can connect more with the community. And I told them it's probably a very basic concept, but actually go out into the community and look for people, it'll show results. My specific question, though, is you mentioned Airbnb in one of these slides. And my question to you, I guess, is what are your thoughts in general on Airbnb? I've heard or read reports and different news articles are saying that Airbnb short-term rentals are an added strain and hurt on the housing economy. One of my colleagues said that Airbnb isn't the most transparent entity when it comes to their numbers. So I'm just curious for your general thoughts on that.
So obviously, you see that they're key to the recovery and to increase in excise tax. I compare Airbnb and how our relationship with them because I have no idea where these homes or entities are. They don't share that information. So it's a lot like the money we get for 911 in the phones through that system. We get a big check at each quarter. Is it quarterly that we get those checks from Airbnb? Monthly. So we get them monthly, but we have no idea how many and how much went to which one. They just sent us, and so far, that's been working well, but we don't know, they're collecting it and we're just trusting that they're sending it the right amount to us. We're continually working with Verbo, too. It's been a challenge with Verbo. They're not, they haven't been quite as open, but neither of them are going to share who and how many. They're just going to end up sending us a check, which would be good for our lodging excise tax and that fund and how we use it. But in general, you know, I don't know if they're good, if they're bad. I haven't really, I haven't really gotten too deep on that, but you know.
And it'd be kind of hard to do so if we don't have those. So what I'm hearing is we have the trust part of it, but not the verify part of it.
Exactly, exactly. A lot like the 911, the tax on your cell phone.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. Other people have had some more pressing things. I just wanted to give some kudos to you, Pete, and your team. You know, we talk about county government sometimes being the invisible layer. I think you might be the most invisible of the, you know, countywide elected officials because you're not running elections records like the clerk, you're not doing law enforcement like the prosecutor and the sheriff. But you are doing these things that are behind the scenes and when you can help people stay in their homes, especially, it's not your obligation by the law to do that. Your obligation is to, you know, there's some things that you have to do. But I just wanted to give you kudos to you and your team, keeping someone in their home and doing the work you're doing on the foreclosure pieces, in addition to all the other statutory stuff that you have to do, is just commendable. And again, it's above and beyond, and it's kind of the way we do business here in Kent County that you're willing to do that. So I just wanted to say thank you and props to the staff, too. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Breeby. Pete, thanks for being here today. I had the same concern as with Airbnbs, that they've been a problem a while, and I think the solution might be Lansing finally take a look at things like that where we're supposedly collecting money, but can't verify that we're even getting it. So I appreciate that. My question is just short. You brought up the part of the investment dollars coming in. Great, we're getting more, but I, you know, the reason we're getting more is inflation is driving that, so in the end, we're probably not. Has there ever been any talk out there of, you know, I know your hands are tied on how it can be invested, of making some small changes to open that up? Is there talk out there?
Yeah, there's actually, there was some legislation last session. There's legislation being, it hadn't been introduced again this session, but it's by our treasurer friend over in, at the city of Grand Rapids about giving us a little bit more leeway on where we can invest it. Right now, all investments have to be in the state of Michigan. They have to have a presence in the state of Michigan. But if you can get more basis points by investing in a school system in Georgia or South Carolina, that's where you'd get more revenue, more margin. So there's talk about it. You know, the banks here in Michigan always kind of fight because they like having this captured audience, but there's others that say, hey, this is common sense. The problem you could run into is, my team is very sophisticated when it comes to investments. There are other counties and other teams, other entities, smaller districts, smaller townships that don't have that. And so if you open up this can, they could get in trouble. And PA 20 is supposed to help you out through those guidelines and hopefully that's what they stick to, but that's kind of, it's always in the works. It's tough to make those changes in Lansing. You got to, it takes two or three, four cycles to finally get through to it because you've got to figure out all the hiccups and traps and barriers that are in the way. But, and on your first point with Airbnb, yeah, it's, they've been key to the success of this excise tax. Verbo, we're still working on, you know, having that help from Lansing would be, would be very, very, because we're not the only county that collects that tax. There's eight counties that collect that tax.
All right. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to echo many of the other commissioners in applauding you and your team for all the, going the extra mile to help people out when they get into these foreclosure situations, make sure the details are understood. So in that context, I'm just curious how it works if the delinquent owner doesn't reside in Kent County or even in Michigan, how you deal with that process of trying to collect those taxes?
It's harder, especially if they don't have the primary residency exemption. It's, means it's a rental property or they're using it for business. The hard part is trying to find someone to connect with. Once you tell them, you know, you're going to lose your business. And I've had a couple like that. You're going to lose your business if we don't work out this plan. And I'll work out a plan with them. Again, I don't want to take someone's business or property away from them at all. The hard part is when they don't live around here and it's tough to find, you know, lots of different resources to try and connect with these people. We have a company called Title Check that does all, we have to, we have to clear that title or check that title 40 years back. And so when they're checking that title, finding out addresses and phone numbers are so key to that. So it's no more difficult than trying to connect with someone who owns their home. It's more difficult to foreclose on somebody who is living in a part, in a home than it is if it was a rental or business. But you just have to figure out that combination which is going to motivate that person to pay their taxes because they're going to lose out as well. So it does happen.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions for our treasurer? All right, seeing none, thanks so much for your time today.
Thank you for your time, and I think I did it in under seven minutes.
Sure, sure. All right. So next, I will call on Commissioner Sparks for the consent agenda.
You know what? I missed public comment. So we have a number of members from the public, I'm sure, that would like to speak today. So if you have a comment regarding an item on the agenda, please come forward. You have three minutes. State your name and your address. Is there any public comment regarding the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Vice Chair and Chairman Steck, wherever you are. Greetings in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Can you please state your name and the agenda item you're going to be discussing?
Yes, I was getting to that.
Thanks.
Daniel Scott. I want to address just what he's been talking about, investment of our money. More importantly, I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. And first of all, I wanted to thank Monica for inviting her brother to sing that beautiful scripture. And that was powerful. By the way, your first name means advisor. I think that's appropriate. I would hope that our county would not invest any funds in any entity that has a part in murdering our fellow citizens through what is called abortion. If we do, if you do, you're an accomplice to murder, according to the scriptures. But I'm also opposed, and this is item number 124, I'm opposed to any more funds being given to any public schools. And this particularly deals with an officer for Kentwood Public Schools. I would oppose any of our money going to any institution that teaches evolution. That's the problem in our schools, one of them. If you teach children they came from animals, they'll act like animals. And all the transgender lies and the perverted sex education. Spend this money by providing Christian bibles, Christian counseling. I can guarantee you, based on the scriptures, this will cut the violence, the chaos in our public schools, including Kentwood Public Schools. And don't tell me that we have to honor separation of church and state because evolution is a religion. It's worshiping yourself. Nancy Pelosi has said that murdering babies is a religion. So of course, biblical Christianity is not a religion. It's a way of life. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else from the public?
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. My name's Josh Lunger. I live at 1570 Lyon Street in Grand Rapids. And I also serve as Vice President of Government Affairs for the Grand Rapids Chamber. I'm here to speak to items LMNN? Oh, I was looking as I walked up here. The amphitheater and the soccer stadium items, obviously. On behalf of our more than 2,600 members across Kent County and greater west Michigan, here to speak and support these items today, our mission is to advance a thriving and prosperous West Michigan for all. And part of the reason we've placed such emphasis on these projects is that because our members have told us to focus on three key areas, a vibrant business climate, a place to call home, and a talent in Michigan. These projects, the investments you're considering and the things that it will enable to continue today are aligned with all three of these objectives. And we know that the benefits go far beyond the physical footprint of what we're talking about. These transformational amenities and the additional investments they bring are tools to attract and retain talent while raising the quality of life of all residents. They will catalyze significant private investment, public investment as well, in thousands of housing units, mixed-use development, connected trailways, river access, green space, and much more. We know that a thriving downtown is an important part of regional employer and talent attraction. Over the summer, we had business leaders meet at a downtown, a new downtown office. And when they were talking about what, why Grand Rapids, why here, they pointed at Van Andel Arena. And they said that this, this urgency, this vibrancy is magnetic to our employees. And when we talk to about other employers, when their employees come and visit here or they move here, or the employers move here, they might not choose Grand Rapids downtown, right? There's plenty of great options. But these residents and these employers that this magnetic type of investment pulls, they may go to Wyoming, they may go to Plainfield, they may go to Elgoma or Gaines, but we're all connected and this is a critical part of our future. We're very fortunate that we have the opportunity to do this. When I talk to my colleagues across the country, many of them are looking at challenging times, especially in metro, urban metros. We're here because we have an opportunity to say, no, we're going to take the next logical step for Grand Rapids. 25 years ago, some folks got together, public-private partnership, what we're here today for, and said, let's build an arena and a convention center. And that was a shot in the dark. We know we can do this. We know we've got the history, we've got the expertise, we've got the public and private leadership, and we're just really excited that you have the opportunity to do this today. We sent a note with a few more folks signing on. We really appreciate, again, that this is a true collaborative effort and we urge you to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this morning? All right, seeing none, I will now call on Commissioner Sparks for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move today's, the consent agenda for today's date.
Is there support? Are we got a Commissioner Coleman? Of course we, are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, please call it over.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burle.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
All right. Thank you. We are now on to our resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Legrand for item A.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move Resolution 121 of today's date regarding the Kent County Brownfield redevelopment authority. This resolution comes to us from the Administrator's Office.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Woodin. Any questions or comments regarding this resolution? Yes, Commissioner Woodin.[1797.21] Yes, Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to express my appreciation that this is coming before us. You know, I think we have a real opportunity to utilize a Brownfield authority here in Kent County to support economic development and housing initiatives across Kent County, and in particular, also partner with those existing Brownfield authorities who know how to handle the historic work of Brownfield authorities but may not be up for the task for the added opportunities that our new state legislation has, has granted them, and our ability to partner with them on how we can use Brownfield authorities to advance our housing goals in Kent County. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of the work that's been taken by staff, the review committee that was assembled, and I'll be voting for this resolution. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. Just to make sure I'm, I'm clear, so we're, this is initiating the process effectively to, you know, do the deep dive, allow the public to, you know, get a public comment, period. So we're taking that kind of logistical step, assuming that we'll establish the Brownfield authority.
Correct. This is a notice of intent, and a public hearing would need to be held, and then it would come back to the board for final approval.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, now this is a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Our next item, item B, I will call on Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I move Resolution 122 of today's date, adding 1.6 FTE public health nurse position for the Children's Special Healthcare Services Program, coming to us from the Health Department.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Pakla. Any questions or comments regarding this item? All right, seeing none, this is also a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. We're on to item number C, and I will call on Commissioner Burle.
Thank you, Vice Chair Breavy. I'd like to bring Resolution 123 of today's date, request to provide patrol deputies assigned to Gaines Township, brought to us by the Sheriff's Office.
All right, support by Commissioner Boujack. I would love to support that as well. So any other, any questions or comments regarding this item? All right, I know that we can definitely use the expanded services in Gaines Township. We've seen significant growth and lots of activity as well. Commissioner Boujack?
Chair, I'd like to request an opportunity to tour the Sheriff's Department, to convenience of the sheriff. Thank you.
All right, I'm sure we can arrange something. Any other questions or comments? All right, now this is a roll call vote. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 123, Commissioners, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burle.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 123 is adopted.
All right, thank you. I'll call on Commissioner McLeod for item D.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I move Resolution 124 of today's date, coming, request to provide school resource officer for Kentwood Public Schools, coming to us from the Sheriff's Office.
Support? All right, support by Commissioner Sparks. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? All right, Commissioner Coleman?
Oh, it's still on. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to clarify, given there was some public comment on, on this particular item, that the, the funding for this school resource officer does almost entirely come from the school district. But I, I do think it's a, a good reminder that while, while sometimes, you know, government's only role is to step in and kind of, when the problems exist, you know, provide safety, you know, and, and other considerations. But as our community knows well, those, you know, in all of our communities throughout Kent County, you know, the, the solutions to a lot of these problems don't lie in more policing. It, it does lie in, in the community, in families, in churches, in, in nonprofits that can, that can step in and really work to solve the root of these issues. So I, I do, I do think, I appreciate that reminder that the solution to these problems is often not from government, but, but can come from the communities when we as community members step up and, and try to solve the root of these problems, not just the effects.
All right, Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with part of what Commissioner Coleman is saying. Definitely many of these different behaviors stem from family, home life and environments. Some are systemic. I would like to know if we could hear from the Sheriff's Department about the position of this resource officer because these positions, when I, many moons, when I was in school, there was a resource officer. We had DARE program, we had all these other programs, and we respected police officers. It builds community. They were people that we can trust. And I think that that is something that we still need to start fostering into the schools. The resource officers do a lot that we don't see behind the scenes, and the students are more and more trusting the officers to do the things that they do. So if you could, Sheriff Michelle, share with us some of those tools and what the resource officer does.
Yep, two very quick clarifications. So in this context, this is the second school resource officer for Kentwood Public Schools. This, they are 100% funding the position for this particular contract because it's their second. And I do think it's important to understand that a school resource officer isn't about enforcement. In fact, very little of what they do is enforcement, generally speaking, if enforcement's necessary. They're likely to call in somebody from Road Patrol to do the enforcement because their work is really acting as a liaison with the school district. It's problem-solving, working on issues before it comes to a point where there's an enforcement need. Two officers in an entire school district like Kentwood really don't, they don't have the resources to do all the enforcement. It's a much bigger issue than that. So they work very closely with the school districts themselves or administration to identify a kid who might need resources ahead of time. And then they also do educational programs, relationship building. They're, they're some of our biggest recruiters for public safety and other public service roles. It's a very important day-to-day component of a school resource officer, not so much enforcement.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Sparks.
And I just wanted to add to that. I was just meeting with Kentwood Administration yesterday, and they had a suicide there, and they've had several attempts as well. So these resource officers are individuals that are able to see some of this before it happens so that we can prevent that. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
I touched on this with UnderSheriff DeWitt at one of our meetings recently. And I love resource officers. I think they're an incredible, valuable tool in any school. You know, the relationships they build and all the information they can get, so on and so forth. My only fear is, because they are deputized officers, which is great, I think there's still an opportunity or a, a need for them to go out beyond the school if need be, that they'll become part of answering calls if it's something that they need to be dispatched to, for sure. And I know Kentwood has had a massive hemorrhaging of police officers in the last probably year or two, and they're doing a lot of, trying to find people through lateral transfers and so on, just like a lot of other departments. So having said that, with their lack of officers right now, and I, I would think a need for more people in the streets, my concern is maybe some of our resource officers might be called out of the schools a little bit more often because of that. And I love this program, but sometimes I wonder if, if Kentwood is doing this kind of out of desperation, not so much, you know what I'm saying?
So keep in mind that the Kentwood School District, High School, and Freshman Center are both in Gaines Township, not in the city of Kentwood. That's in our patrol district. That's where we would serve as the primary enforcement organization. That being said, every contract we write to include our school resource officers has an emergency clause, which essentially gives me the latitude to use those resources for priority one and two calls. Those are the ones that we talk about in our performance measures where we track our response times. And, and this does happen with school resource officers. If they are available and they're the closest to an emergency, they would be used in that context for that emergency until such time that other resources can get to that scene and they can be relieved to return to their normal duties. Happens with township officers. We just approved a Gaines Township contract. Gaines Township officers can be sent to Byron, Kentwood City, Caledonia. The, the first responsibility of a law enforcement officer is to meet the emergency need. That happens first, and then they return to the contracted services. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And I, I'd like to just, I'm hoping in the future, it used to be a pretty noble, you know, still is in my mind.
Still is.
But we gotta get back to the point where young men and women would be attracted to getting into law enforcement because it's, it's all over the place. We're losing really, really good officers, and a lot of them are retiring at age 50 now because they can. And I think that's the age, at 40 to 50, man, you got officers that are really, really talented, and they're, they're leaving. And I think we gotta do, and I know you do, we need to do a better job of letting them know we appreciate them. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 124, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burle.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 124 is adopted.
All right, thank you, Clerk. I do have a question real quick on the next item, item E. It looks like there's two resolutions, 125 and 136, that are listed together. Is that how we would like it to go?
Yes.
All right. I'll call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we take up Resolution 125 and 136 of today's date, a notice of intent to issue municipal securities for 300 Monroe Avenue, forgive me, 320 Ottawa and Fuller Campus, as well as an appropriation of $8 million from strategic capital for the aforementioned addresses. It comes to us from Fiscal Services.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Baker? And just a note, too, on this item number 125, it would be a maximum amount of $70 million. All right, are there any questions or comments regarding this? Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. So it's odd, I think I might be one of the first folk to move something and then potentially vote against it. But I want to be very clear about my thoughts right now to ensure that folks are, fully understand where I'm at. I have full support of the notice of intent to issue the municipal securities. I voted for it in committee, and that was largely because I fully accept that we need to update our, our facility needs. Status quo, in my view, is not an option. Staff took a diligent effort, and I applaud the efforts of Mr. Rambo, Mr. Bradshaw especially, to provide us those options. And with their recommendation, recommended that we pursue what they called Option 2, the building of the Fuller Campus. And I don't necessarily think that's a bad option, but I don't think personally it's the best option. My preference would be some modified version of Option 1, especially given the fact that their, their cost delta's while different or not as far apart as they were prior to the revision. And on top of that, while I, I think our staff have taken steps to ensure that there is an ability to use flexible space or potential flexible space, should we pursue Option 2, I simply believe that keeping our administration in our downtown is, has a true added benefit from being centrally located, which could be adaptable to any changes to transportation infrastructure, being in close proximity to the other major regional players in our community. You know, and given the fact that the appropriation that we are approving right now is an appropriation to allow for the pursuit of design and preparation, is effectively our approval of the recommendation. And so it's for that reason that I'll be voting no, not because I think that the recommendation was a bad one. I just don't think it was the best one before us. And should this body adopt this, this measure, and, and as I think it will, I, I do want to make it very clear, I don't have any intent to hinder the enactment of our facility plan going forward. I just want to state for the record my own belief that there may, that there was a better option or a, a best option than I, I would have preferred. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I su, I support this. I, you know, I've always, I mean, I'm glad I got to be on the commission when we were considering this. As my, as I am a, a person in the community who's, who's interacted with the county, not as a commissioner, but mostly going to the clerk's office to file paperwork so I could run for office several times, and I noticed, you know, there's a window down the row from where we file, and there's people doing very major life events. And I think our public deserves, this is a community that's, that's, that's quite affluent, and that our public deserves to be doing their business with the government in a way that's, that's respectful and, you know, and in fact, makes them feel good about being a part of the county. So that's, I'm just solid there. And I also trust that the administration is going, and, and the staff that work here also should be, you know, treated very well, too. I trust that the administration will make the decisions that are best about making us both accessible to the public and also convenient for the people that work here. So I'll certainly support this.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBoer?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I, I just wanted to share that I will be supporting this. I'm very thankful for administration's work on this and the consideration of having services more accessible for people that don't live right downtown, as parking is an issue. And so I'm very thankful that my constituents could access county services without having to figure out parking and driving downtown.
All right, Commissioner LaGrand?
Thank you, Chair. Just a point of clarification, because Commissioner Wooden brought this up, is, are we voting for the, the adminis, the staff administration plan? Will there be another, you know, plan proposed that needs to be approved?
Yes, good question. So the way this will work, oh, I'm, is it?
Yeah.
I'm good. So today you're, you are approving Option 2 and the notice of intent to bond, and that would be at $70 million, which is 10 million more than what we believe we'll need. But typically, when you do the NOI, you do that with a margin of safety. The, there will be other decisions that need to come to the board. So the other piece of this is allowing us to use $8 million from strategic capital to go hire an architect and basically to do the schematic design of the new facility at the Fuller Campus. And so we will have a check-in with the board six months in, we believe, to do a work session at least, to walk through that and make sure everybody's on the same page, and then probably another six months after that. And these timelines are subject to finding consultants and how long that takes and all that sort of thing. Then you would have a vote as a board on approving that project, because we will have bid it by then. Final design will be bid, comes back to the board, and then Kent County typically assigns And I should mention, as part of that, the project cash flow's at about 100 million, but part of that is we plan to sell 82 Ionia if all this is approved and all those things happen. About five years down the road, we would sell 82 Ionia. That money would come in to replenish strategic capital. And then also, part of the project is to build space for Network 180. We can build that cost into their lease and that would be paid back over time. And if, as Option Two calls for, we do end up rehabbing 320 Ottawa for the MIDC, the MIDC would pay that cost as well. So that, there's money moving around over the five years, but that, the net, we figure, is about 77 million.
Just a short follow-up question, and I know a lot of studies has gone into this, but Treasurer McGregor, for example, brought up the fact that we might be able to provide services at satellite locations. Are we, you know, how much are we projecting maybe a decreased need with digital services or online services or remote services?
We.
You know, to affect the size of the campus or?
That was part of the space needs study that happened in various phases, and I'll say fits and starts due to world events, from 2015 up to present. But each department was interviewed and that was one of the topics that was covered. And so, I think that that was taken into account as best we could. When you look at the North Services Complex, we have a, we do have some ability to have office hours there, but not really dedicated space for the general governmental services. So I think that part of it is, as a fastest-growing county, we believe this is a plan that will service well for 50 years, but as with anything else, as change comes, we'll have to continuously adapt. But we think this is a good core footprint to move forward on.
Thank you.
Commissioner McLeod?
Thank you, Vice Chair Breavy. So I just want to say that I definitely appreciate the recommendation process that the county administration went through to bring us these various four options. I was a bit surprised today to understand that what I thought we were voting on in Finance Committee that was coming to the county is for, to the board, to the full board for consideration today, was just the notice of intent. And so, understanding today that it does actually include us approving Option Two, which was the recommendation, I guess I'm a little concerned about that. I would echo everything that Commissioner Woodin said. I do believe as well that we need better county facilities. We all know that. Our constituents deserve more. They deserve better facilities to come and operate and do the things they need to do with their businesses and with their personal lives. However, the four options that were presented to us, I assume that we would have another opportunity to be able to provide additional consult in terms of maybe we could, because when we were doing these work sessions, the understanding that I had was that these are four options, but we did make plenty of comment to say that maybe these aren't the specific four options. Maybe we could readjust them some sort of way. Because I like the, all the things that are being proposed, but I think that there's a better option, like Commissioner Woodin said, in terms of being able to maybe move some things from various options around so that we could have better costs, you know, better total costs, concerns here as well as, you know, just taking advantage of some of the facilities that are currently operational that we might be able to, you know, adjust a little bit differently than what's on this plan. So I, I won't be supporting this, but it's not because I don't think we need to do something. I just wish we could have had the opportunity to choose something else. So, again, if we were just voting on the notice of intent to bond, that would be one thing. But now, understanding that we're actually voting to approve the recommendation that came before us, I won't be able to support that. And so I just want to clarify again, I think that we do need to do something, but this option, I don't think is the best option. And I wish we could have had a little bit more opportunity to be able to see some other combinations come forward. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Just a quick question for Administrator L. You mentioned that we're gonna be potentially bonding for about 10 million more than what we may need. My question is, sorry.
I'm sorry.
You're no worries. I was just saying that you mentioned that we're basically bonding for about 10 million more than what we may need. My question is, what happens with that? Like, what happens if we end up receiving more in bonds than what we need? Does that just get sent back? Are those funds tied to only this specific project? Does it get moved around to be potentially used for other things or?
We will bond for only what we need. So the way the notice of intent works, it kicks the legal process into where there's a day period where somebody could object. You don't want to go through this process twice. So that's why the notice of intent is usually set higher than what we think we'll need. And I think Mark and Tim did a huge amount of due diligence above and beyond to meet with different contractors and try to inflation-proof our numbers as well as you can do that today. And so, we're comfortable that the notice of intent at 70 million, which is 10 million more than we think we need, is a zone of safety that we can remain within. You will, when you get the project back, once it's been designed and when it's been bid, then we'll have the price. And there'll be contingencies and all that, so we won't really need to bond for anything more than what is required on that day.
Okay. Cool. That makes sense. Thank you. And I just wanted, for the record, to echo Commissioners Woodin and McLeod. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make sure that while we're throwing out acronyms, that everyone kind of knows what we're speaking about, the MIDC, because I don't know which one that one is myself.
It's the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, the group that was set up in State Statute in 2012 to basically change how the method of oversight of the indigent defense system in Michigan operates.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, I should probably know this, but I may have missed it. Is this bond, is this something that allows for an early payout?
That would be determined at the point of sale. So those are all provisions that would be negotiated.
And what's the interest rate we're looking at?
You know, I, we don't know. I don't know. Jeff, I don't know if you have any kind of sense of what that might be. I mean, the market has fluctuated. The rate of interest has gone down some, but I had heard in the range of 5% at one time.
Yeah, I believe it was. Good morning, Commissioners. Good question. We're probably not going to issue these bonds until about a year from now, so I really hate to hesitate to guess on what the interest rates might be. If we hit a recession, I expect the feds to start lowering rates rather quickly. So it all depends on what happens in the next year before we issue these.
Could you explain, I guess, the differences between, you know, a plan that allows for early payout and one that doesn't? Is it always an option on any bond or?
So it typically is. Typically, we'll do a 10-year, sometimes we do a nine-year call, basically. But I've never seen them shorter than nine years. So most of them have a nine or 10-year bond. We'll look at the rates at that time, and if there's enough savings to refinance them, we'll do them at that time.
There's no early payout up?
Not before that timeframe, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other, Commissioner Hennessy?
Thank you. It strikes me as awkward that we're giving a notice of intent in, you know, publishing a time when, you know, people can object. And as we were just told, bonds likely won't be issued for a year. And then combining it with beginning to spend money already. That strikes me as, I don't understand why, you know, this was done sort of at the last minute, why these two have been combined at this point. It seems disrespectful of the intent behind a notice of intent, if you will.
This is how we would typically do it. Certainly, funds wouldn't be spent until after any comment period is done. But certainly, letting people know what we intend to spend the money on and what the project is certainly seems like a good idea.
But why are we initiating the spending of $8 million?
To design the project, it's really the next step in the process in order to make the projects happen.
Let me bear it down if you don't mind. Just, why aren't we waiting till that time period for the notice of intent to expire?
I mean, I think, all I can say is that this is typically how it's done. Typically, in this type of thing, we don't get a lot of comments, but you always want to leave room for there to be comments.
Right.
As a county of almost 700,000 people, you know, we believe we've done the research and the work to bring a quality program together. And typically, when projects go, you do these two steps at the same time.
I am having some trouble with the combining of it. It just, I think the notice of intent should be handled as a notice of intent and the spending of money should be a sep, should be a separate resolution and not have been combined at the end as they were.
If I can just add, I think part of it is the timing of the projects to get the, we don't have any funds available, we can't start the RFP process and all of that. So we certainly aren't going to expend any funds until after the 45-day referendum period is done. But we'll be lined up to be able to issue those RFPs and get ready to go so we can meet our timelines for the building phase of this, so, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. So, I recall a couple decades ago, a national politician was pilloried for saying, you know, I was for it before I was against it. But I think that's, that's an unfair standard, and I think indeed, that's a good aspect of these major projects, is that we take them in a sequence that as we get more and more detailed, we have the option to, at a particular point, say, I liked the plan before, but now with more details, I don't like the plan, let's stop. You know, like, so I, I am supportive of moving forward with this. I do think that it is, in terms of the substance, a notice of intent, it's just the logistical aspect for the bonding. However, that also, in my understanding, the reason notice of intent is for 70 million is because our general understanding and track is what the administrator sent us the report in August that kind of outlined this Option Three. We've gotten into more details. And I know, back in the summer, I had a number of concerns about the plan, and I appreciate the great deal of research that kind of went into alleviating a number of those concerns on my part. So I'm for this, and I think the, it sounds like there's also some confusion around that $8 million expenditure. I believe the part of today's resolution that we're approving is effectively the logistical step to say, like, as we spend money getting more detailed in our planning, that if we do go forward with the bond, we're able to cover those planning, engineering, et cetera, architecture, all that stuff, we're able to cover those costs with the proceeds of the bond. So that also is just a logistical step here. But I do think, while it sounds like some of my colleagues today are taking that, you know, I'm, I was for it, but now I'm against it today, that may be me in the future if we get into some of these details. And it may be the whole commission in the future, if we get into some of these details and realize some aspect of it, whether it's the plans and architecture and that structure themselves, or even if it's, you know, today we think maybe it's 4% or 5% interest, but when we get there, it's going to be 10% interest. That may be a point where we say, wait a second, this actually, we like, we like the plan, we like the approach, but we don't like the cost. So I'm in favor of this kind of logistical step moving forward. And I appreciate that we're taking this in a process that allows us to say, you know, for various reasons, as we represent our constituents, actually, now with more detail, I don't like this plan anymore. But to get to more detail from that recommendation in August, I do think we have to spend a bit of money and open up the logistical process. So I'm very much in favor of taking this logistical step, because we do have to solve some of these longstanding issues. You know, I'm closing in on a decade, you know, at this table, and a number of these issues, such as 82 Ionia, some other space needs for critical functions of the county, they have to be dealt with. So I think, moving forward with these options to take a pause in the future, make a different decision in the future, is the, is the right way to handle these big decisions. So I appreciate that.
All right. Commissioner Sparks was next, but she's already spoken once, so I'm curious if there's anyone else that has a question or comment that they'd like to speak before. All right, Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Commissioner DeBoer that our constituents deserve more. You know, when they come down to do their services, many of them don't come because of parking. They don't come because they can't find, you know, the building and the place, and it's confusing between Grand Rapids and, you know, Kent County. So I agree, and then some of our facilities are, you know, older facilities. So I like that we are talking about moving, you know, to a different space. I don't like that we do something else in finance, but when we get here, there's something else. So that's the part that I believe Commissioner Woodin and Commissioner McLeod and Commissioner Diaz are speaking, you know, to. I, like I said, I do appreciate all of the work that has been put into this, and I'm not sure exactly which way I'm going to vote just yet, because Commissioner Coleman does raise a very, and Commissioner Baker raised a very good point that we need to, and I guess this is my question, so we need to do this process right here so that we could get to the next step? Because we can't do any RFPs or anything else without having some set monies in place. Is that correct?
I mean, we could do them, but they would not be eligible to be paid for with bond money when we sell the bond for the project.
Okay. So that's really why we are taking these steps? And we are able to make different decisions later, should it come before us and maybe the interest rate is not?
I need to be really clear that we are proposing Option Two and that that is part of this as well.
Okay.
You'll recall that we did several informational sessions.
Yes.
A number of them, and we've had a standing call out for questions, comments, input. But we have fairly consistently recommended Option Two. And that is what we would plan to design with the $8 million. And that, and so that's what would come back in six months as a schematic, and then it would come back in a year as a bid project, just so we're all clear.
And you still have a presence downtown.
So, yes, just to summarize very quickly, the idea would be that pretty much everything in this building would move to the Fuller Campus, and some of what is in 82 Ionia would also move to the Fuller Campus. But that prosecutor's office would come here, which puts them right in with the courts. And then they would be on Floors Three and Two. And that Floor One would really be a mobile space kind of area, that we would have, we would have a kind of a meeting slash training slash community room that could be used for various functions. We would also have open space offices that administration could use. For example, I'm on some boards downtown. There may be days where I prefer just to dock into a docking station here and work from here. Also, we do, would need about 10 open space offices for various friend-of-the-court employees for days when they need to engage with the court. They could work here in an open space on the first floor. Also, probation would need some open space. And then, really, anybody in the county who has business downtown could use some of those open space hoteling-type office spaces. So that would be the plan. And then ultimately, then, once the prosecutor is here and once the other offices have gone to Fuller, then that building would be sold.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Boujack, did you have a question or comment? Okay. Must have picked up the wrong sign. Commissioner Woodin?
Thank you, Chair. Just a clarifying question. So, you know, again, we voted on the intent to bond resolution in Finance Committee. The inclusion of the $8 million as the second resolution was on the advice of Bond Council, correct?
I mean, that was all in the finance agenda, but yeah, I mean, that was, no, I think that was simply how we moved the project forward.
Yeah. And so is there a, I guess my question is, is there a, well, I understand why they should be taken up today, is there a reason why they needed to be taken up as one vote? I guess that's my one question.
Just efficiency, they could be done by separate votes.
Okay. No, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to clarify, I think this is a good discussion for us, the full board, and for, you know, the public who's interested to see and understand the context of this logistical decision. I just want to make sure it's clear, though, the substance of the logistical decision is the same thing that we considered Tuesday, or last week Tuesday, or whatever, at the Finance Committee meeting. Like, substantively, there have not been any changes since that meeting.
Right. We didn't slip in doing the $8 million for Option Two.
Right.
not what it was. It's something new.
I actually don't know why it ended up as two things on here because it was one thing in finance.
Right.
So, why it's listed as two things on the agenda, I don't know because it, it was just one thing. So even that, that's a good point, but it, I think it's actually just maybe a mistake on the agenda because it was just one thing when we voted it out of the Finance Committee.
It included all these aspects.
All right, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. Just, just a reminder, I just did a little search on Google, but we're roughly six minutes away from the Fuller complex from this building right here. So, and they have a lot of parking. So I mean, it, it's, it's not that huge of a leap to go from here to there. It's just way easier for, I'd say, 90% of the people that we're dealing with. So, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Baker.
Just real quick. So with Commissioner, I mean Administrator Vanderburg's summary, where would Commission Chambers be after, with the, with the plan to?
The way I've anticipated this, it would, they would be at Fuller. Typically, the board meets where the administration and all the other departments are.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? All right. Yes, Commissioner Legrand.
There, there was talk about if we moved to the majority of activities to Fuller Avenue that we would still have Commission Chambers down here and some meetings would be here. Is that not the case?
I think that the question is where do you want to build a dais and this and probably not have two of those. There would be space here. The commission could meet if it chose to, but it wouldn't be under this format the way we're anticipating that. That wouldn't be a room that has the dais like this.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other additional questions, comments, thoughts? All right, seeing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt resolutions 125 and 136, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
No.
Hennessy.
No.
Oliver King. Legrand.
No.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
No.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
No.
Boojak.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 13 ayes, five nays. The motion passes. Resolutions 125 and 136 are adopted.
All right, thank you. I look forward to the next steps on that big project. Our next item on the agenda, I'll call on Commissioner Green for item F.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the adoption of resolution 126, Dwight Lydell Water Wheel Project CIP Budget Amendment from the Parks Department.
Supported by Commissioner Boojak. Any questions or comments regarding this item? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 126, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand. Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal. Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King. Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 126 is adopted.
All right, thank you. I'll call on Commissioner Sparks for item G.
Thank you Madam Chair. I'd like to move Agenda Item 127 of today's date, the liquor tax for substance abuse budget amendment with the Fiscal Services.
Is there support? Commissioner Burrell. Any questions or comments regarding this item? All right, seeing none, this is also a roll call vote.
Thank you Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 127, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand. Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal. Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King. Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mister, or Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 127 is adopted.
All right, thank you. I'll call on Commissioner Antor for the next item, item H.
Thank you. Just a matter of order. Would you, any need to maybe bundle these next two or just run through?
We can, they're separate years so we should probably run them separately.
Okay. I'd like to move resolution 113023128, which would be the 2023 Milk Meal Grant Budget.
All right, supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. I'll call on Commissioner Antor again for item I.
All right, thank you Chair. I'd like to move resolution 113023129, the 2024 Milk Meal Grant Budget.
All right, is there support? Support by Commissioner Hennessy. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is also a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, Commissioner Sparks, I will call on you for item J.
Thank you Madam Chair. I'd like to move resolution 130, exciting resolution with Calvin University Women Supporting Women Program with the Health Department of today's date.
All right. Was that support by Commissioner McLeod? Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this item? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Breavy. So, we have a resolution, Women Supporting Women, for women who have decided or made the decision to have a child and they may have high health issues around it. What, what a fantastic program. I would just hope that it could be expanded to even go earlier on if someone's making a decision to have a child, that the support from the community, not just emotional support, but health and medical, will be made available and I think it's a small step in the right direction. But that's my comment. But my question is, is, it is such an interesting program, how do women find out about this program?
All right, we have Joanne Hogenson from the Health Department to answer that question.
Good morning Commissioners. Most of the women or, or at this point so far it's been all of the women that have, that participate in Women Supporting Women are also enrolled in our MIHP program, which is the maternal infant health program. This is a Medicaid-funded program. So these are women who are either pregnant or have recently had a baby and they receive home visiting services by a nurse, a social worker, or dietitian. And then when they demonstrate that they may be having some struggles after the baby's born, and the biggest one that we're seeing is social isolation. They're home alone. They have no one to talk to, no one to support them, no one to kind of give them orientation. Then we draw those women together in a group setting once a week for 12 weeks and they receive support not only from our nurse, but also from each other. So we have about 10 women, all of whom have just had a baby in a room together, getting support from each other. We give them a pre-test, a post-test, and then another test six months later. And what we're seeing is that their anxiety comes down, their depression is relieved, and they all of a sudden feel a part of a larger group.
Okay, thank you. I, I mean, I got more to, to my question. Maybe I'll reach out to you.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any other questions or comments regarding this item? All right, seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Our next item, I will call on Commissioner Coleman for item K.
Thank you Madam Chair. I move resolution 131 to amend the strategic capital CIP project budget.
Thank you. Is there support? Support by Commissioner Burrell. Any other, any questions or comments regarding this item? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 131, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand. Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal. Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King. Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 131 is adopted.
All right, thank you. I will call on Commissioner Wooden for item L.
Thank you Chair. It is my pleasure. Move resolution 132 of today's date, resolution to approve an amendment to the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention and Arena Authority Operating Agreement. It comes to us from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Breavy. So, we're making an amendment, you know, amendment to operating agreement. I don't have any problems with that, but I know I've talked to Administrator Vanderburg. I think we need a little more transparency when it comes to this whole organization. I mean, the next four things I'm going to be voting on was thrown at us suddenly saying we're, our backs are to the wall, we got to get moving and, you know, and I just think that the role of the county commission was just kind of, kind of a side thing and something that they just had to cross off the list. So, I, I am supportive of this, but I'm even more supportive of in the future date when we take a look at this whole operating agreement and how it can be more transparent, not just to Commissioners, but to the public that are, in the end, are going to be funding it. So, thank you.
There were a number of meetings too involving Grand Action and the Commissioners in the last few months regarding this project and several upcoming projects. We do have members from Grand Action if they are interested in speaking at all today about the following items, or we can ask questions as we go too. Are there any other Commissioners that have questions? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you Madam Vice Chair. Just, can, can we have just a quick explanation for anybody who may be watching on what, what we're amending with this operating agreement?
Yes. So, back in March of 2022, the County Board and the City Commission and the CAA approved a resolution allowing the CAA and City to move forward with a sale of 201 Market from the City to the CAA with a whole list of contingencies. And at that time, the County Board adopted a resolution which made it clear that the county was not going to be part of this project as a full partner in the same way that we are with the Van Andel Arena and with the DeVos Place. However, the, I think the concerns the county had at that time have been met. One was environmental, one was funding. I think that, A, as the proforma developed for what the amphitheater is going to be able to do, it's really kind of amazing. I think that's going to be a rock solid, financially solid operation, which really removes some of that concern. The other funding piece was initially, there was a lot of talk of the county and the city perhaps contributing ARPA funds towards the construction of the amphitheater. The county and the city combined our guide house, that was our consultant throughout the ARPA process, and did several deep dives into whether that was allowable and found that it was not. And then also there was talk of, at the time that we kind of excluded the county out of that, there was also talk of using either county general fund or strategic capital fund. So in some way I can understand why somebody might say, well gee, we were told we wouldn't be funding this and now you're recommending we fund this. But the form of the funding is in hotel motel tax, which is coming in at its most robust levels ever. And it really is intended for this type of thing. And so that's why the recommended, recommendation came back to pay $15 million in $5 million increments. And so I, I, we did, I think, work hard to remove, I think, the concerns that were initially had about being a full partner. So this resolution basically does add the county back in as a full partner in the amphitheater.
Okay. So this is specifically around the amphitheater?
Correct.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions for somebody at CAA that I sent out yesterday, but unfortunately they were not able to be answered in time for this. And seeing as this is the first resolution in regards to the amphitheater, I'd like to ask that now, if I may. So I reached out to, or Commissioner Wooden helped me reach out to Kara Wood. And my question with the amphitheater, seeing as it's basically a right on the north end of my district, is in regards to public use. Specifically, I have been told by Commissioner Wooden that the stage itself will not be accessible to the public. But I, I had questions around essentially can members of the public rent the stage if they, if they choose to do so. Ms. Wood replied, "The facility will be available to anyone to rent based on the booking policy and availability. The green space and plaza outside of the venue will be available to the public as park space." So I replied to that message and I said, "Do we have estimates on how much it would cost to rent the stage and is the booking, the booking policy prepared already?" And Ms. Wood replied, "Not to my knowledge. These questions would be best addressed by Rich at the CAA." So that is my question. You know, it's cool if, if, basically I, I am in favor of creating more public gathering spaces for the, for, for people to access, especially given the fact that, you know, speaking as, if I'm not mistaken, the youngest Commissioner on the stage, I think we need way more things for young people and people in general to do. But my worry is the cost of renting those, the stage itself. So I'm wondering if there's somebody at the CAA who can answer the question in regards to how much is actually a projected cost for renting these facilities to ensure that it's actually accessible to everybody in the county.
All right, we have Kara Wood from Grand Action 2.0.
So I'm Kara Wood from the Grand Action, not representing the CAA. But I do know that the costs have not been estimated yet for the rental rates, nor is the policy in place. It's much too early in the process for us to know and understand what those would be for the public, but it is fully expected that it would be managed in much the same way the arena and the convention center are. So there will be rental rates, there will be booking policies, and those will be yet to be developed.
Okay. So I guess my concern is, you know, just speaking as somebody who, I'm currently taking a class at GBSU and essentially we talk about the risks of tourism and over-tourism. And given what we're currently experiencing with the zoo, for example, and the conversations that we're having with the public there, I'm concerned that the county and other entities are essentially putting the investment and the attraction of tourists over the people who already live in this county. And so I don't know if this is how things are typically done to where details and specifications as far as how much it's actually going to cost to use these facilities and these booking policies not being ready before we actually move forward with this. I don't know if that's how things are typically done, but I, at this time, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with this. So I will be voting no and I will be requesting a, a, a roll call vote on this resolution. Because frankly, I mean, I think that those questions should be answered before we decide to move forward with the project in this magnitude. Again, not necessarily saying that it's a bad idea. I just, I just want to make sure that the big projects that we're bringing to the county like this are truly accessible to everybody and that, you know, somebody doesn't have to pay potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars to rent the stage. So I would just like to have a little bit more information before the county moves forward. Thank you.
This is definitely a very large project and the, you know, funding is coming from multiple sources. The amphitheater, you know, hasn't been even built yet. So a lot of those things are determined further down the road as far as costs go and, you know, looking at rates of other booking facilities as well. So there's a lot of factors that are yet to be determined and I think it's normal procedure not to have the rental rates available until after the, you know, building is completed or close to being completed. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you Chair. So I'm not going to be continuing my, a new trend of mine, voting against resolutions that I move. I will be voting for this. But I wanted to, at least per the comments, I can completely understand my colleagues' concerns about creating spaces that are accessible for those around us. And what I would simply posit is the, what we're voting on right now, the approval of amending our operating agreement to make us a full funding partner also helps us in crafting the operations of this facility and in fact gives us the opportunity to influence potential booking policies and allow us to help ensure that this project, transformational as it is, is also transformation with, with all in mind and why I'll be voting for it. And, but I, I certainly appreciate the, the question and challenge that's been brought to us by Commissioner Diaz.
All right, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you Chair. Going to Commissioner Diaz's point, I, I agree with you. There's, there's a lot of moving parts. We're never going to be able to rent that space, me or you. It's, it's not going to happen. You know, we built DeVos Center, we bonded out for that to put heads in beds. That was the, and that remains the main motivation. And I get it. in beds. That was the, and that remains the main motivation. And I get it, because we have to pay those bonds off, and we do what we can to bring people into Grand Rapids. Over the years, over the last 14 years, we've been really proactive on trying to get people to come here. My biggest issue is, while we continue to build cool stuff, you know, we've put money, over a million dollars into the Restore the Rapids, we've got the soccer amphitheater, the zoo coming up. I would suggest those are all kind of localized activities for the most part, and we have, like, zero capacity right now to host projects, conferences, shows. We should just put no room here in Grand Rapids, you know, sign up, because we're missing out on probably hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of money of conferences and so forth that want to come here, but there's no room at the end. And that's just a fact, and it's been that way for quite a while. DeVos Place served a purpose, but people can't find a building here anywhere to host events. It just isn't happening. And I think we need to move away from some of this other fun stuff and get back into the types of buildings that will literally bring heads into the beds in the construction or advancement of an idea for a conference center here. I remind, I'm reminded of the young man that used to come in here all the time talking about the information booth all the time. Anybody that's been around for a while, he came over and over and over and kept beating that same drum. He wasn't wrong. It was actually a pretty good idea. And I think we've got our eyes off the ball. We're doing too much really cool stuff and getting away from the things that really brings revenue in. That soccer field and the amphitheater, Restore the Rapids, the zoo thing, cool stuff. But let's get back to the nuts and bolts that makes this town, this city, this giant little city, we call it, a great place for conferences and shows and events, because that literally will bring people in to stay multiple nights. Let me see if I had anything else. I guess the only other thing would be, sometimes in these discussions, I feel like we're more of like the Grand Rapids Board of Commissioners as opposed to the Kent County Board of Commissioners. This is a big county. If you look at the footprint of Grand Rapids as compared to the entire county, and I understand why the folks representing Grand Rapids like these types of things, but we're a lot bigger than Grand Rapids, and I think we need to look outside the borders and look at all the cost savings for some of these events to boom outside the area. That would be my last point. But I appreciate, Commissioner Diaz, we're not going to rent that place. It's not going to be available, and certainly not at what we could pay for it. This is a big deal. This is a major league event center. It's not made for small shooters like us. It's going to be for people with the big acts and stuff. I understand that, you know, it's the market's folk, but we won't ever be able to rent that place. Thank you.
Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to take the opportunity to say that I am fully in support of this project. I appreciate the county standing behind it, the land, changing hands, steering, it's like steering an ocean liner, a decision this big. But the fact that it is going to open up the riverfront, that it is going to make big changes, that it is, it's going to allow the city to have public park space all along the river, that is going to be open to the public because of a decision that we make here, and I really appreciate it. And I do represent downtown, so yes, I feel like it's good for my district, but it's definitely good for the region. It's definitely good for the businesses that want to attract the talent to come to this area. It's going to improve green space. It's going to improve the opportunities downtown, and I think it's a great way that we can partner across the region to really improve what we have to offer. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Last Thursday, I ran the Turkey Trot, and I did quite well amongst the AARP-eligible runners. And GRPS, there was 6,000 participants, raised over $100,000 for GRPS athletics. I doubt that, I don't know, maybe, but I doubt when people built that arena that they were hoping for, you know, 6,000 runners in turkey costumes running around the streets of Grand Rapids. But I have also participated in numerous events at the convention center. I've yet to go to a convention, but the community, so I really do see this as something. I think it's very important. I think Commissioner Antor and Diaz raise important points about whether or not the community as a whole will be able to benefit from this rather than just tourism. I appreciate the support from the downtown interested developers and business community, and, but I also hope that it benefits the larger community. And I just have to trust that the kind of management that has brought in the community to the convention center and the arena over the, you know, couple decades I've lived in Grand Rapids would continue to happen as it relates to the amphitheater, and that the community would continue to benefit, and that the management would have an interaction and a relationship with the broader community to do that. And I do feel it will help us to become more of a world-class city. But I don't vote to support this because, simply because of the tax revenue that it might bring, but that improves the quality of life of everybody that lives in this county. I think that that's important. I also feel it's important that this, we've had a broad coalition of people to support this, and I think that there are some non-physical infrastructure needs that we're going to be addressing in the future, such as early childhood supports, that I hope that that coalition also supports that. But for this, I just feel like this is something that's good for a broader community, and I just encourage others to support it. Thanks.
L, did you want to add more on how it impacts our broader community?
Sure. I think that it's important to note, and this is something I'm sensitive to as county administrator, that I'm not the county administrator of the city of Grand Rapids, but of a county that has 35 local governments in its cities, villages, and townships. And I think there's some stats that are really interesting. One would be that in, I think it was 2019, we hit our peak as far as the occupancy level of our hotels throughout the county, the entire county. And then, we're already, it looks like we beat that last year and now this year as well. And I think that it shows that the things that happen in Grand Rapids and some of the other places draw, not just from the city or just from the county even, but from the region and even other states. And so, this is the type of thing, I think, that does bring a benefit countywide. I remember looking at some of the stats on the, I'm on, I'm on Experience Grand Rapids with Commissioner Hildenbrand, and just looking at some of the stats of, you know, where does the hotel motel tax come from? 95% is from outside of Kent County. And so, when you look at just the impact of having, having the amenities for people locally to enjoy, not just in Grand Rapids, but all of Kent County and even West Michigan, and then you look, so there's some real internal benefit for business development, job development, growth. But then also, I think, when you look at, as a tourism and economic development kind of piece, you know, really, in my mind, it isn't localized, I just wanted to say this, it isn't localized to Grand Rapids. I would have a hard time, I think, bringing you something that will only benefit at Grand Rapids. I just wanted to mention that, so.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Sparks.
Madam Chair, on one breath, we say there's nothing to do for young people. But then, on the other hand, we want to vote it down. We have to think broadly for all of our constituents. Yes, I love Kentwood. You know, that is where I live. I represent Wyoming as well, and we've been in Grand Rapids. But I think about Cedar Springs and Sparta and Solon and all these other Lowell and all these other places when we're voting. And these individuals that are here need somewhere to go, because they're likely, I think the studies show that they're likely to travel less than an hour or an hour or so to be able to enjoy entertainment. So, we think of DeVos Place, we think of the arena, now we have 20 Monroe, we've got the hotels. You can't even get into the Amway or the JW if you wanted to book an event, because event planning is booked out usually a year, two years in advance. So, will we be able to enjoy the fruits of all of this labor? Yes, we will. We may not be the person booking, you know, the act, but we can be the person going to the event, or we could be, you know, one of the people that, maybe a friend or a family member, somebody who works there. So, these are economic drivers for the region. They're not just, you know, our little pockets of where we represent. We have almost 700,000 constituents to think about. And it appears, Carol, you're getting the brunt of everything. You've got, you know, everything going on in your district, but it's because it's a hub, you know. It's just like our airport is a hub. So, when we look at this, they can't tell us right now exactly how much it's going to be rented for, because they don't have all of the numbers in place. But like I said, just knowing, looking at history, DeVos Place, the arena, if you want to bring in an act, you're welcome to do that if you want to make that investment. But more than that, you're allowing your constituents a quality of life, things to do, as you say. Young people need things to do. We're providing things for them to do. So, I am very excited about all of the things that we have going on in Kent County. Yes, I'd like to see some, you know, more things happening your way. But right now, we're hyper focusing on the areas where we can develop, and trust me, we're going to run out of space here, so we will be headed that way, I'm sure. But we just, I want us to make sure that we are looking at the economic development that can happen for all of our constituents, because that's our role. Our role is to look for everyone. It's not just to be, you know, looking in just small pockets. Our role also is to make sure that this county thrives and has economic means to bring people in. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sparks. Next, I'll call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Yes, I think the West Side has become the hub for all things entertainment, for better or worse. You know, this project does impact neighborhoods. Being on the river, it will impact us across the river. And the one thing I have, I'm going to vote for this today, but the one reason is that noise studies were done, and I'm trusting that they were, you know, done in a very professional way and adequately, but they were done, and so that I can be assured that through the physical barriers of expressways, through the way in which the stage is oriented, that there will not be a lot of noise pollution in the evening hours when parents might be putting their children to bed, or might be sleeping because they work out of the eight to five normal hours that we, that we generally work. And so, the noise study has made a significant difference, in my opinion, of this particular project, because I think it is, we are a series of neighborhoods, we're a series of neighbors, and I think that there needs to be consideration for the people who live here first, and then the economic activity, and who we hire to do the building of this, the construction jobs to start with, that we have offered. I think that's an important consideration, that there really be true good wages to the people who are employed to work at this facility after it's built. But I do think it has to come, and all of these projects have to come, with consideration of the people who already live here, near and far. And another point I'll make is that they are not adding new parking. We will have thousands upon thousands of people in the evening coming to this event, and there is not a need seen for adding new parking. And I just have to say that.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say I appreciate having a wide-ranging conversation on this topic, because the whole topic is an important one. It's an important concept, investment, all the words you want to use. I appreciate the Mayor of Grand Rapids being here to listen to the County Board's discussion of aspects of this project as well. To the particular resolution before us, this one has a very straightforward question in my mind. It's if this amphitheater project and all that it involves on the river proceeds and goes forward and is built and successful, what should be the governance structure? So, that's really the question before us that we're voting on next. And I think it's clear that the proper governance structure is the convention and arena authority. Maybe eventually we'll need a new name as additional things, you know, are put under its purview. But that collaboration between Kent County, the city of Grand Rapids, other stakeholders who are represented within that body, to me, is absolutely clearly the place that governance of this belongs. And I just want to echo what Commissioner Ponstein said, that as that body has existed in its current form for multiple decades now, taking a future look at refreshing that structure to ensure that, you know, it meets the needs of our region today, I think that's a great idea. But to the question before us now of where does the governance belong, I think it's absolutely clear it's with the CAA.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. Just real quickly, you know, I've been an event planner for over 30 years at both the local and national level. And if anybody wants to know, like Commissioner Diaz, what events cost, I could probably get you within 10% of what the cost would be to rent any facility, depending on the time, depending on the production that you would need, insurance, all that kind of stuff. I've become a bit of an expert at it, because I've been doing it for 30 years. So, I can let you know exactly. Tell me what you'd like to do, I'll tell you what it's going to cost you within 10% of the actual numbers. So, I'm here for anybody if you really want to get down in the weeds and talk about that kind of stuff. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding the agenda item? All right. This is going to be a roll call vote, so all those, well, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 132, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
No.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Ponstein. Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal. Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King. LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz. Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 16 yeas, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution 132 is adopted.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to call on Commissioner Sparks for item M.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Agenda Item 133, approve the amphitheater funding to the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention and Area Authority from the Administrator's Office.
All right. Is there support?
All right, support.
Support by Commissioner Baker. Any other, any questions or comments regarding this? Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo on this agenda item, a lot of the excitement that we've heard in the previous agenda items as well. I'm glad to see the county, the city of Grand Rapids, and our partners consider ways in which we can make Grand Rapids and really Kent County more vibrant and economically productive area. I'm glad to see us look for gaps in the economy in various markets and to fill those gaps, and glad to hear a public comment earlier regarding the interest in making sure that we're approaching talent attraction meaningfully. As Commissioner Baker alluded to in his comments previously, I hope the interest in improving economy for the region really transcends what we're talking about today. I want to read a quick quote that elevates another opportunity to do this, which already has some of the attention of some of the groups that we've got supporting today. The quote says, "Child care is crucial to Michigan's economic infrastructure and provides a stable foundation for the state to continue to thrive as a business environment." And that quote comes directly from Rick Baker, the CEO of the Grand Rapids Chamber, which recently commissioned, supported the commissioning of a report called Untapped Potential. I'm really excited to see the opportunities that the amphitheater provides from an economic development perspective for our region. I want to highlight that the report, called Untapped Potential, identified $2.8 billion per year of lost economic activity simply because of lack of access to affordable and seats for childcare. If we do a little bit of quick math to figure out what Kent County's role in that is, Kent County is about 10% of the economic activity of the state, that means Kent County here is missing out on $288 million annually of economic activity, which, when we think about the scale of that relative to the scale of what we're talking about today, is just mind-boggling to me. There simply aren't enough seats to go around for families even that can afford it. My constituents are telling me all the time that they're less able to pursue their economic goals, because wait lists are years long at childcare facilities. We don't have enough facilities, we need more. We don't have enough educators, we need more, and we need ways for those educators to meaningfully connect and engage with each other. each other. So I'm planning to vote in favor of the action request today, but I really do hope that we carry through this excitement for economic improvements for our county by thinking about those other ways that we can do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Breeby. So I'll, I'll, I'll just be brief. I just wanna make the point that, you know, I, I don't have anything against the amphitheater or the funding, or that we're gonna be promising X amount of dollars out of the hotel motel tax. What I wanna echo is that during the last recession, a lot of you weren't on this commission, some of us were, we made deep cuts from our general fund because we didn't have the money. In the meantime, in that same time period, we were bailing out the bonds on the Convention Center. They paid some of that back through the hotel motel tax, but they're still on the hook for $10 million of taxpayer money. That wasn't money that came out of hotel stays, that came out of property taxes by our taxpayers to bail that fund out. And somehow, I don't wanna, well, I wanna make sure that that $10 million isn't lost and somehow it's a wash here, wash there. That's money owed to taxpayers. Thank you.
That's a very good point. And so what this resolution would do is delay the repayment of that for three years, knowing that the backstop is it all has to be repaid by 2031, because that's when the debt is paid off, uh, on the Convention Center. So, but yes, thank you for that.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Um, I will be supporting this, um, mainly because it is coming out of the excise tax, and it is not going to be, um, property taxes from, like, constituents. I will absolutely, um, defend their property taxes, but since this is not coming from the general fund and it's coming from hotel motel tax, I will be supporting this initiative. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Um, I think I heard the word here, transformational, several times. The decisions that this commission is making certainly is historical. We, we as commissioners have come to this meeting place at a very, uh, interesting time where, at this precipice, the decisions that we're making are all part of a lot of work that's been going on for many, many years by groups that have been looking forward and thinking forward. And today, we have an opportunity to partner with the City of Grand Rapids. We have the mayor here. I think this is an excellent opportunity to show the ability for county government and the city government to work together. And not only is Grand Rapids working very, very hard and has been to become a cool city, I think we have an opportunity to become a cool county. When I look at that, that emblem there, and I see that big K, I see a O and a O and a L behind it. So, it's not just the city. It's not just the city that is benefiting from this. It is truly our county. And when, when people in the state of Michigan look at places in this state where great things are happening, transformational, Kent County and the City of Grand Rapids is where it's happening. And today, we have that opportunity to, to say yes to, uh, an amphitheater and watch this city grow. And yes, there will be problems with parking. I agree with, um, Commissioner Hennessy that, you know, we need to look at those things. And I also agree with my other commissioner, fellow commissioners, that we need to look at other, um, arena opportunities to expand our ability to support the demand for, uh, conventions and hoteling opportunities. So, many, many, uh, difficult, you know, growing problems that we're dealing with. But today, we have an opportunity to put in place something that will be transformational for generations to come. I will be voting yes.
Well said, Commissioner Boujack. You know, I definitely agree this is a very transformational project. And like the arena and the Convention Center, we're, um, catalysts to creating a great, you know, downtown area where we can all come and visit. Um, this is definitely a catalyst to the other projects that are coming down the pipeline that'll be, um, beautiful, amazing for our region here in West Michigan. I love attending concerts. I love going to the outdoor concerts at Meyer Gardens. Um, I'm looking forward to some of the larger shows that, you know, would potentially come to this amphitheater instead of driving over to the east side of the state or Chicago. Can keep my money right here in West Michigan. And, um, I know for a fact, we've got a lot of, um, great shows that always come through here. So I look forward to supporting this and seeing, um, what's to come in the next year or two. So, any other questions or comments on this item?
All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Clerk, Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 133, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
No.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Sparks.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
No.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have sixteen yays, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution 133 is adopted.
All right. Thank you. Next, I'll call on Commissioner Burl for item N.
Thank you, Vice Chair Breeby. I'd like to move Resolution 134 of today's date, support the memorandum of understanding related to public soccer stadium brought to us by the Administrator's Office.
All right. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Breeby. So I'll, I'll just be brief. Um, I'm all for looking in for the best spot possibly. And through this discussion, and I was at one of the meetings, uh, they're hoping this soccer stadium hits a population that's been underserved, and that's the Latinx would really support this. If that's truly one of the goals, uh, the location that they've got their eyes on, and I'm worried that, that that's already done in stone, and alternate, alternate sites are not gonna be looked at. So, that is a concern, not a concern for me to vote no on this, because hopefully, uh, the process is, uh, more open and accepting of different ideas. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Just, um, I'm clarifying. I believe I asked this in committee, just wanted to make, um, sure, uh, here as well. Um, the MOU itself lists a number of items under the amendment to, of the operating agreement, stating that this is what would be required to do this, but it does not in any way legally compel us to, um, amend the op-, uh, the operating agreement. It just states, this is what would be required for this to happen.
Correct. When the discussion was had regarding whether to amend the operating agreement, the city and county got together and put together a framework in the MOU with contingencies, that when all those are met, then it would come back to the city, the county, and the CAA for consideration of whether to amend the operating agreement.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Back to the word transformational. Here we have a second request for us to support yet another major, major change to the county and the city. And again, an opportunity to partner with the city. I, I really wanna commend the, those who are bringing this forward to us as being forward-thinking. In the United States, we're all football fans. And when, I'm talking NFL. But in the rest of the world, football is soccer. And the soccer sport has been growing and growing and growing internationally, and is now just catching on in the United States. And for Grand Rapids and for Kent County to be at the forefront of that momentum and that, you know, change in people's understanding of soccer, and for us to have an opportunity to put a stadium here is, once again, making Grand Rapids a cool city and Kent County a cool county. And I really think that supporting this is a good idea, no matter where, where they decide to put it. I think getting behind this and putting a letter of support by this county commission is a great idea.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Another project, potentially, for the West Side. But it remains officially, this remains à la, you know, Harry Potter, the location which shall not be officially disclosed. So I do think, and, and I've talked to Kara Wooden, we're making some, um, inroads into talking about it more, but, but it has not been talked about, um, with neighbors at this point. I, I somewhat, um, think this may be a little premature to do this resolution today, although I'm going to, before I decide how I'm going to vote, I'm going to just simply ask, if you cut through this, what exactly is the county committing to? What, what, what does this memorandum of understanding do, and what are we committing to?
What, what you're committing to do is, in the future, consider amending the operating agreement if all those contingencies are met. That's what this commits you to.
Does that answer your question?
Right. So there is no legal requirement for us to continue to follow through. There is, you know, it's sort of a, just an intent that we'll consider this in the future.
There, there's, in our opinion, far too many unknowns to amend the operating agreement at this time, so the contingencies are an attempt with the city and county together to list what those unknowns are, to bring it back and have enough for you to then consider it appropriately.
So I do hope that there, you know, that, that the transparency, as they, as it does come to the neighborhoods on the West Side of Grand Rapids where it's potentially going to be located, um, you know, that, that there really be that kind of a transparency available to the residents.
I, if I could just say, I think that if you just look at the amphitheater as an example, there's been a number of community engagements. So I think, once the grand action can talk about the site, I know that the plans are to fully engage, like has happened with the amphitheater, so.
Good. I do hope that that time is allowed, and then I have talked to Kara Wooden about beginning that process.
All right. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, just to go along with the Commissioners Ponstein and Hennessy, uh, the, we, I have had a lot of people reach out to me in support of this soccer stadium, and certainly willing to support it, and I certainly support this MOU. I do agree that, uh, and, and I would say that we've had quite a bit of conversation about the amphitheater formally. We haven't had much conversation about the soccer stadium. And to some extent, that's because the conversations that Kara arranged require, uh, commissioners to talk too much to get to the soccer stadium part of the, uh, agenda. But, um, I, I think that as, if you add up, and I, I think that Commissioner Hennessy is, is that there's, there can be a lot of things that are coming to, you know, the West Side neighborhoods. We should be talking them, about them as a whole, as well as the individual parts, and, and what the impact should be. And I just hope that, well, I, I expect that this will also move us down the, down the road. So, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I, uh, I just wanna say with the soccer stadium in general, um, personally, I'm a big fan of soccer. I think the Coleman family in, uh, September and October had fifty-three youth soccer games. Just with my own children. So, uh, we're very much a, a soccer family, um, and I'm sure I would attend, uh, this facility frequently. That being said, I, I, I think to when I was first elected to this board, uh, lived right by Oriole Park in Wyoming, and I'm just thinking of a bunch of my neighbors, uh, right there that would never go to the soccer stadium. They have no interest in it. It, in the grand scheme of things, really isn't gonna impact, you know, the region significantly enough, you know, that it's, so I, I wanna be sure that, like, uh, Commissioner DeBoer said on the previous item, that, you know, uh, direct taxpayer money from, you know, local residents, uh, is not being used to kind of fund these projects. And, and I appreciate that on the amphitheater, all the work being done to ensure that the funding sources are, you know, from an appropriate, uh, uh, space. And I know on our finance meeting, just before the meeting, we had a, a red line copy that had added some language into this memorandum of understanding, just to clarify some of that funding aspect. And I don't think it's on this copy unless I'm just missing it. Uh, so I just wanna confirm that what we're passing will, will include that additional clarity on funding expectations for this project. That language has been added to number two in the agreement that's in the agenda. And it reads, uh, "The city and county understand and agree that the stadium will not be funded using any general fund dollars of the county." So it looks like in the packet, that's not in there, so I just wanna confirm that it's- It's in the packet that I pulled up today for the meeting. Oh, maybe I'm looking at an old packet, but just, just to make sure that we are passing the version that includes that, um, that, that would be great. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Um, I just wanna say that I, I have, you know, similar concerns with the soccer stadium as with the amphitheater, um, but of course, there's no official location for the soccer stadium yet, so it's two different situations. As of now, I'm gonna be voting in favor of this resolution, because it's basically a non-binding resolution. And with that being said, though, I would encourage the people who are talking about these, this specific project, to not just stick with the current idea of putting it where the news articles are saying it's going to be. Um, to Commissioner Antor's point, we have a large county, and a project like the soccer stadium, I think it can be put in any number of places. Um, and I personally, as somebody who has spent most of my life in the Grand Rapids and Wyoming area, um, I'd like to see other parts of the county and be drawn to other parts of the county and have those experiences. I think we'll all be better off for it. Um, I, you know, I don't, I might be, I, I know for a fact I'm biased, um, but I would venture to guess that the Latino population in the county has had a huge role in pushing soccer forward, um, in this county. Uh, my dad has been playing soccer for decades now. Um, a guy that I went to high school with created his own high, uh, soccer team, um, and it started with just a local club with friends and, and whatnot, and now he's out there like a, a professional soccer manager, basically. I mean, making partnerships with big entities in the area. Um, and I'm forgetting the name of the gentleman who came and spoke about the soccer stadium earlier this year, um, who, if I remember correctly, said that there was, that there was going to be an attempt to reach out to various communities, um, in the county to, to talk about, you know, the, uh, soccer and, and the stadium. I am a huge fan of soccer. I think it's great. I think with the 2026 World Cup coming up soon, um, that's going to be in Canada, Mexico, the United States. I mean, I don't know when this is gonna be done, but if it's done by then, who knows? Maybe we can attract somebody here to, to the city. Um, if not in that World Cup, then maybe in the future. Um, but again, you know, I, I think, um, I hope that the, that the Chamber of Commerce would have, um, large discussions in regards to public transportation, because I know we've talked a little bit here about, uh, parking, but in my personal view, I don't think we should, and, and in the view of a lot of constituents, more parking lots is not the answer. Um, and so I, I am excited that we're gonna be creating some, some projects in the county, um, but I do think that that needs to be, um, not discussed in a way that things like this have been discussed for generations now. You just think about the project itself and all of the, not all of these other aspects that are involved with the project. And so again, I'll be voting in favor of this, um, non-binding resolution essentially today, but, um, I hope that some of those details and discussions will include, um, some of what I mentioned today. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Vice Chair Breeby. Um, so I will be voting in support of this as well, but I do, um, hope that when this comes back before us, um, the, in the future, once there, the unknowns are known, that we are able to, um, have some information that, um, provide some, some clarity and some, some transparency, so that we can understand that this will be actually, um, open and available for, for everyone. Um, because we know that, you know, with, with soccer, if it's, if we have a, if this soccer stadium, once it's built, um, is, um, part of some regional or, you know, state team, that, you know, we are able to have them, um, utilize this stadium for their, 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 their games and practices and stuff. That'd be wonderful. But we also, as has been mentioned, have a bunch of soccer teams around here that, um, could utilize this space, and I would hate to see it not utilized fully. Um, so I hope that there's, that part of this plan is, um, to make sure that it's fully being utilized, because I think that that's, there's a need for it. I, I, you know, raised four sons and all of them played soccer, so we've been all around the, 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 the city, uh, the Kent County area, playing soccer, and I think it would be great for us to have a nice soccer stadium here. But I do, um, worry about, you know, um, it being fully utilized and, and it being accessible to those that would, would like to use it for, um, you know, youth soccer and, and things of that nature. So I, I'm looking forward to supporting this. I'm also looking forward to having more information about how it will actually be, um, structured and, and how, um, it will be able to be used by the community, along with, you know, how, the amphitheater. I think that that's great. These two projects together, I think, will be great for the community, but my worry is that many people that come downtown in Grand Rapids are, that not all of the community be, we need to make sure that all of the community feels like they're welcome to be able to utilize these spaces and come and participate in these, in events and things that are offered in Kent County. And so I think that we've got a ways to go there, and I hope that as the conversations open up about, you know, how these projects will move forward, that we are always considering all of the Kent County residents. And also, we know that, you know, as we've talked about, that many people from outside of our region come to frequent our establishments and enjoy our entertainment, but our residents also need to feel comfortable being able to utilize these spaces and engage in these activities, and I think that that's something that I haven't heard a lot about yet, and I'm hoping to hear more as we move these forward. So I will be supporting this, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you Chair. I will be supporting this piece as we move forward to look a little deeper, and I just want to say, if we're going to trust this narrative that people will come from all over the state and the country because of this soccer stadium filling this huge void of interest for soccer, I think we can all agree that if the soccer field was located a few miles outside of Grand Rapids, that it would have no effect whatsoever on the people's ability and their interest in coming to the soccer stadium. Because we're talking about, we travel over to Detroit or wherever the big stadiums are, concert venues, we go there to watch concerts and do those types of activities. So I don't think people won't come here if it's just outside the city of Grand Rapids. That makes no sense, so let's just, let's be honest in our assessment here, but I will
McLeod-
Yes.
be voting for moving on with this issue.
Hennessy-
Yes.
Oliver King-
Yes.
All right, thank you.
LaGrand-
Any other questions or comments regarding this item?
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Wooden-
Thank you Chair.
Yes.
Pakla-
I'm going to borrow Commissioner Antor's phrase about trusting the narrative, because I know
Yes.
Diaz-
Yes.
Boujack-
Yes.
a lot of people and institutions are really hoping for this to happen, and I'm believing
Cherstek-
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 134 is adopted.
that it will be a great thing for the area.
All right, thank you. We've worked our way almost through the alphabet today, and we are on item O on our agenda,
I don't think that publicly funded sports stadiums always live up to the economic hype,
our last resolution, and I am going to call on Commissioner McLeod.
so I am cautiously optimistic that this will go well, but I do approve of the idea
Thank you, Vice Chair Brevi. I am excited to move forward, Resolution 135 of today's date, the 2023 Lodging Excise
that we will be making an investment here that could benefit especially a lot of our,
Tax Budget Amendment, coming to us from Fiscal Services.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Sparks.
a lot of our newer members of the community who come from soccer crazy nations and would
Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Brevi. I have nothing against this, I mean, it's well deserved.
love to attend a semi-pro level game. And so to be able to offer that, I'm really hoping that this will be a great investment,
Experienced Grand Rapids does a fantastic job promoting this city, but hopefully, in
and I will be voting for it, thanks.
All right, thank you.
the next contract series, is that maybe we should take a look at what all the lodging
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing done, this is also going to be a roll call vote. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
excise tax is supposed to fund, and Al, you don't have to give this to me today, but
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 132, Commissioners Green-
Yes.
it'd be interesting to see how other convention visitors' bureaus are funded, and do they
Antor-
Yes.
Merchant-
Yes.
DeBoer-
Yes.
Hildenbrand-
also fund out of hotel motel taxes, which is designed to pay off investments, so thank
Yes.
Ponstein-
Yes.
Burl-
Yes.
Coleman-
Yes.
you.
Vice Chair Brevi-
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Commissioners Teal-
Sparks-
This item is also a roll call vote, so Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 135, Commissioners Green-
Yes.
Antor-
Yes.
Merchant-
Yes.
DeBoer-
Yes.
Hildenbrand-
Yes.
Ponstein-
Yes.
Burl-
Yes.
Coleman-
Yes.
Vice Chair Brevi-
Yes.
Commissioners Teal-
Sparks-
Yes.
McLeod-
Yes.
Hennessy-
Yes.
Oliver King-
Yes.
LaGrand-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Wooden-
Yes.
Pakla-
Yes.
Diaz-
Yes.
Boujack-
Yes.
Cherstek-
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 134 is adopted.
All right, thank you. We've worked our way almost through the alphabet today, and we are on item O on our agenda, our last resolution, and I am going to call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brevi. I am excited to move forward, Resolution 135 of today's date, the 2023 Lodging Excise Tax Budget Amendment, coming to us from Fiscal Services.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Brevi. I have nothing against this, I mean, it's well deserved. Experienced Grand Rapids does a fantastic job promoting this city, but hopefully, in the next contract series, is that maybe we should take a look at what all the lodging excise tax is supposed to fund, and Al, you don't have to give this to me today, but it'd be interesting to see how other convention visitors' bureaus are funded, and do they also fund out of hotel motel taxes, which is designed to pay off investments, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This item is also a roll call vote, so Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 135, Commissioners Green-
Yes.
Antor-
Yes.
Merchant-
Yes.
DeBoer-
Yes.
Hildenbrand-
Yes.
Ponstein-
Yes.
Burl-
Yes.
Coleman-
Yes.
Vice Chair Brevi-
Yes.
Commissioners Teal-
Sparks-
Yes.
McLeod-
Yes.
Hennessy-
Yes.
Oliver King-
Yes.
LaGrand-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Wooden-
Yes.
Pakla-
Yes.
Diaz-
Yes.
Boujack-
Yes.
Cherstek-
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 135 is adopted.
All right, thank you. That concludes all of our resolutions for today, so we are on item nine, public comment, and thank you to those that have stuck with us. And if you're still here and you have comments related to general county matters, come up to the podium, state your name, address.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
All right, cool. How you doing everybody? I'm Dee Jones, I stay at 967 Tamarack Avenue, and I wanted to tell you guys, so a couple, a little bit ago, a guy had contacted me, I told you guys, go back a little bit further. So I asked Kent County Board, when you guys got the ARPA funding, really to actually help me do an esports competition. I believe I asked for $250,000 to do an esports competition. It wasn't a part of ARPA's criteria to be able to fund this project, but I had a lot of support from the Dems and the Republicans, and I was really happy about that. And then I ended up, so I've been doing my grinding, all of that stuff, I'm not one of those people that expects the government to come save you, because I don't know, a lot of times, the government has come save people or communities that are suffering. And I come from a population of people that are suffering, from political decisions all across the United States, from bad Republicans, bad Dems, it's not all nice and handy dandy. And so I end up getting the opportunity, a guy hit me up, and he was like, he hit me up, he wanted to do a $100,000 esports competition here in Kent County, which I told you guys about this year, but he hit me up, he was like, hey, I want to do a seven-figure esports competition, potentially in somewhere around your area, Kent County. So we spoke to the Sports Commission about the Van Nando Arena, I hear you guys talking about, you know, soccer and everything else, but esports is a very, very large thing, it's actually larger than all traditional sports. But everything I've been doing, working with a network of actually 465 colleges, we're going to be doing a cool thing with Epic Games, I'm going to be doing some cool things, partnering with Comic Con to do an esports competition at the DeVos place, I used to be a stagehand, I used to set up Disney for ICE, I used to look at the commercials on TV, and then I actually set up the shows, and now I'm pushing teapots and stuff like that around, which was clearly pretty crazy and pretty cool. I've been able to work at the Van Nando, setting up different shows, been able to do a lot of cool things, but don't forget about esports, because I'm doing a lot of cool, innovative things. I'm doing things that are going to transform the community by itself, working with Kent District Libraries, connecting to the largest gaming companies on the planet. I still haven't connected them to two other gaming companies, somebody already offered me to do a seven-figure esports competition. I will screenshot this and send it to everybody on the board, so you know I'm not lying. These people are coming to me because of the work I've been doing, and speaking out, and actually taking initiative. I don't need somebody to go push me, I'll go grind and do something myself, because I want these things. I'm passionate, I got a lot of things I want to do, I want to live that luxurious life. If I could, I would say, I want to be richer than the DeVoses, I want to be richer than the Van Nandos, I want to be richer than the Bezos, I want to be richer than these people. I believe I can, but I'm going to do it in a positive, and I'm going to do it by changing the community and giving back, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Tina Fee Meyer, I'm here representing the Save John Ball Park team. So on behalf of the Save John Ball Park team, we want to share a few updates on what we've been working on since last week's Physical Resources and Finance Committee meeting. Last week's meeting and throughout the last couple of months, we've heard from Commissioners and County Administrators their concerns and questions regarding zoo's expansion of parking, and we've been hard at work trying to examine all the sides of this amendment and to bring alternative options to the table. We believe a solution exists to, one, meet the needs of the zoo and the community, but two, to also honor our shared values of conservation of preservation of green space. We believe that there are better options than just the 2023 amendment and the 2015 plan itself that's in place. Is paving over green space actually a smart policy here? We don't believe so, and we want to offer solutions to all of you that are a win for all of us. With that being said, our primary goals are simple, to conserve all park green space by proposing alternate parking and transportation options, and to reach a point of minimal strong opposition from the community. So with that being said, our update of all the actionable items that we've been working on since last Tuesday, just over a week ago, we've created a plan that outlines 10 alternative parking options, and we've sent those to county commissioners, evaluated the parking rates, distances, and shuttle options at eight competing regional zoos. This information is included in the parking report, but we did note that every single zoo has paid parking on site. Currently, John Ball Zoo does not pay for parking. Shuttle services to overflow lots are common, including in Detroit, and many zoos encourage the use of public transit. Some zoos offer discounted admission with proof of that public transit option as well, encouraging that form. Speaking of public transit, one of our team members has also communicated with the Rapid here in town. Their contact at the Rapid was so moved by the video of last week's board meeting that he personally took it upon himself to put in a request to the Rapid's Planning Department to amend or add routes that are more beneficial to zoo guests. The Rapid is excited for potential partnerships and to increase ridership. We're collaborating, we are also collaborating with a community planner and strategist to continue to develop feasible parking suggestions. We requested an air quality monitor for the neighborhood from Just Air. J-Ban has a history of carcinogenic, carcinogenic air pollution in highways contribute to the poor air quality. A monitor will help us to establish those metrics. We're also working with an appraiser to determine the impact of lost green space and increased activity on neighborhood home values. We have reached out to the Mobile GR Traffic and Engineering Team to review angled parking on Park Street. We understand with the new design of Valley that it's not likely an option there, but Park Street might give the neighborhood more parking as well as the zoo. This option has been mentioned but not evaluated up to this point. Lastly, we've requested a meeting with county administrators and zoo leadership and continue to work collaboratively. We're committed to a proactive problem-solving approach. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public? We have our Mayor Roslyn Bliss.
Thank you, thank you Chair Brevi, and thank you to all the Commissioners. I just wanted to come up here and publicly express my gratitude for the conversation today, but also your votes in support of what truly are, thank you, Commissioner Boujack, I believe, transformational. We're making decisions today that, you know, individuals around these tables made over 20 years ago that helped put our city on the map, our entire county and region on the map. And I believe that because of our public-private partnerships, your ongoing commitment to being a strong public partner, we truly are the bright light in the state of Michigan, but we're also able to compete with so many other cities, not just in the Midwest, but really throughout the country. But what I also want to say is thank you for your service, because you're not just a partner on these transformational projects, you're not just a partner with the city of Grand Rapids, you are strong partners with all of my fellow mayors, proud to have good relationships with my Metro Six mayors, and we often talk about how much we appreciate our partnership with the county. And you're key partners in all of the other issues that are critical to being a great place to live and addressing quality of life issues, but also addressing issues that are impacting people's lives. So thank you for your work on mental health, housing, childhood lead poisoning, public safety, for being a partner as we look to respond to individuals in crisis differently, your support today of supporting moms, your support at the court, the list goes on and on and on. You're doing important work for everyone throughout this county. The transformational projects are important, and they're only a piece of the important work that you do in collaboration with other cities. So I just want to say thank you, thank you for your ongoing work. Everything that you do, public service is hard these days, as we all know, way harder than 20 years ago, when the people were making decisions then, I would argue, and I just really appreciate you making the hard decisions after doing a lot of learning, asking good questions, raising concerns. I appreciate hearing your concerns as well, and trust me, those are concerns residents have brought to my table as well, and we'll continue to work to address those. So thank you all for your work, thanks.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Daniel Scott again, longtime resident of the county. First of all, just a quick invitation, if you know of anyone that needs high-quality clothing, winter clothing now, sleeping bags, blankets, pillows, our facility at 229 South Division, this Saturday will be offering those items, all sizes and all styles. Again, you will have to hear the gospel if you attend or anyone else attends. We just had our public, our National Thanksgiving Day. Again, as I said before, we should be grateful every day, but I'm especially grateful today for, again, 320 East Fulton being closed down in August, and the hundreds of lives being saved from being murdered at that facility. Much more work to do, because I hear now Corwell Health has explained, exclaimed they're willing to pick up the slack. Hospital just a few blocks from here. It's despicable that a place meant to preserve life will end it. Why do I keep coming here? It's because I want to speak up for those that cannot. And now our Baal Molik Party out of Lansing has passed this terrible bill that will now restrict access that have saved lives in the past, where, for instance, the hallways of these murder clinics will not have to be a certain width to allow EMT units to come in if there's an emergency. There's no regulation now to properly dispose of murdered babies, there's no regulation as far as health and cleanliness in these murder clinics in the whole state. And praise the Lord for right to life of Michigan and other pro-life agencies that are suing our governor, our Attorney General, our Secretary of State, who has pushed these murderous laws that not only murders babies, but now murders mothers. The abortion pill, RU486, is killing more and more of our women, and what a sexist, what a sexist darkness, half of these babies being murdered are female. Please, do all you can to address these issues, and to me, that's the most important issues facing our county. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak today?
I believe this goes on here?
I guess so, thank you. Thanks for taking care of us.
Not a problem. My name is Eric Brown, live in Grand Rapids, but I'm here also not only as a, not only We all know that those issues are deep-lying, and, you know, always law enforcement is not necessarily the answer. We do understand the need for that, but we know that there are underlying issues that probably needed to be addressed, need to be addressed with some of those dollars. Secondly, I'd like to invite, I was gonna call you by your name, but I won't do that here, Administrator Vandenberg. We have a little bit of relationship to, just to be, to help with some community engagement around a lot of these things that we talked about a lot today. We heard that the community isn't hearing about things. I understand that, I understand being in you guys' positions and having to do what you do, but let's see if there's ways that we can help engage the community better so that these things aren't mysterious and that they're not, you know, it seems like they're always done in the room where it happens, but that the community can be more involved in that process. And lastly, I do support, and the league supports, these economic resolutions that were made today, but there were words that were put around today or voiced today that had, of course, piqued my interest, words like historic, words like transformative, words like catalytic. Let's use this as an opportunity, or my charge to those, the Commissioners here, as well as administration, as well as those strategic partners that are listed along with the county and other stakeholders, as well as those who have promoted these things very heavily, to use this as an opportunity to be truly transformative, not just historic. We've heard about decisions made 20 years ago that are affecting today. Let's make sure that another 20 years from now, we can look back at this and make sure that these economic drivers are used to be fully transformative for the entire community, for the entire community. Let's not look back and be able to say it didn't have impact for Black, Brown, and other disadvantaged populations within our community. We want to make sure that that happens. We know that the Kellogg Report that says that if economically, it can be an over $90 billion annual impact, not only for Grand Rapids, not only for Kent County, but for the state, if we can solve for these disparities that exist when it comes to income, when it comes to jobs, as it relates to Black and Brown people. So let's make sure that we use this as an opportunity, my charges to you guys, as well as the rest of your partners. Please be aware of some of your partners' goals as it relates to economic inclusion through business participation and workforce. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak today?
Just one quick item, I think, with the time and other methods we communicate. I'll just say that there's a lot of work being done by county staff, by representatives of our represented labor groups. You'll see a number of contracts, I think, coming to you in LHR and fiscal and the board. But so there will be, I think, a number of those that get resolved by the end of the year. And with that, I'll pass on anything else.
All right. Next, we have reports. Are there any Commissioner reports? Commissioner Pakla.
I'll be very brief, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. Just wanted to highlight, coming out of the Grand Valley Metro Council Policy Group, the Transit Master Plan for the Rapid is closing its community survey on December 8th. Anybody that's listening or anybody in the room that's interested in that, given the comments from our John Ball Zoo neighbors, can visit that survey at transitthriving.org and voice their opinions.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I know the meeting's gone very long, but I do have some things that I wanna say that I believe will affect all of the Commissioners in this room tonight, or today. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for having, taking time to come here to our meeting and making public comments. It's great to see her willingness to not only partner, but be a part of our decision-making, you know, and taking interest in what's happening here today. The word "transformational" has been used many, many times today. And during our prize, I went down to an exhibit here on Monroe Avenue. I think it was called Bubbles. Anyone else go to that? And on this particular night, it was just spectacularly clear sky. The stars were shining. And as I stood there and I looked south to Grand Rapids, and I saw the bridges all lit up and the city glowing in its beauty, I thought to myself, what an amazing time to be a Commissioner for Kent County on this board. And I had an inspirational moment, and I was thinking about all these things that we're doing, the decisions that we're making for sustainable business park, moving the county seat to the Fuller Campus, upgrading the Grand Rapids, multi-multi-million dollar upgrade to the Grand Rapids Public Museum, voting on things like the amphitheater, the soccer stadium, the significant Kent County park decisions we made for land acquisition and trails, and the potential aquarium in the near future. All these things are happening right now, right in our time as Commissioners on this board. And I felt very inspired in that moment, and I'm very happy to be a part of this commission and working in a bipartisan fashion with all of you great people here at this time. So I just wanted to just throw that out there and say, Commissioners, we are blessed to be on this commission. As difficult as decisions are that we are making, we are making history, and we will be a part of that history. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boujack. Is there any other Commissioner reports? It's reports. Commissioner Ponstein, did you have a report?
No.
No? All right. Did you have a report? Okay. So no more reports? We are on Commissioner miscellaneous. And Commissioner Ponstein.
I just wanna point, Commissioner Boujack asked for a tour and get to know the police, I mean, the Sheriff's Department better. I don't know if it's still around, but when I first got on, there was a thing called the Sheriff's Police Academy. It's a seven-week program from A to Z. You'll learn everything about our Sheriff's Department. If that's still going on, I would encourage new members to attend that. Doesn't cost anything, and it's very educational.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Sorry to burst everybody's bubble, but, you know, it's part of my job, too. We've been talking about transformational activities. Well, let's be honest. I mean, I look to the east for a lot of things, including Lancaster, Pennsylvania, who's truly transformed themselves. But I look at the city of Detroit, they have led the state in transformational activities. They have done more to, outside of the public market, to spend billions of dollars for tran, and I could go down the list. You know all the things they've done. And yet, just recently, our governor just issued a request to the legislature for this massive, hundreds of million dollars of bailout money, once again, for the city of Detroit. And you, I'm not making this stuff up, folks. You just have to follow the bouncing ball here and actually read the reports. They've done more to transform the city of Detroit than anybody in the state, and yet here we go again. They're asking us, and that money isn't coming from just the folks on the east side, it's coming from us through discretionary funding. And so even though we can pie in the sky this stuff, transformation, we can talk about that, I would prefer to talk about all these things that didn't work, in spite of really enthusiastic participation. Our, the Rapid project, that was gonna transform Grand Rapids. We invested money in that. I just want everybody to be measured, because I've talked about economic development, I've heard these talks, it's gonna inject hundreds of millions, whatever it is. I look into those numbers, I follow up on those numbers. Usually, those things are so far off, we just trust, we don't verify. We trust the input, because, you know, it's nice to be able to trust people. But when I actually look at the numbers, it, very rarely do those things match reality. So again, sorry to be the wet rag here, but we gotta do a little bit deeper dive than just all this pie in the sky stuff, and that's where I'm at. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Antor. Anyone else? Commissioner Diaz.
Madam Vice Chair, I'll also be quick. For those of you who weren't at LHR, I wanted to remind you about the initiative to bring R.I.P. medical debt to Kent County. I mentioned how I had an update that the county, the Cannon Township Board of Supervisors did express their support for this initiative. Tuesday is coming very fast, and to my current understanding, the same resolution that was, that was on the agenda in regards to ARPA funding is the same resolution that's going to be appearing before finance on Tuesday, and more than likely before all of us next week, Thursday. And so I hope that we can get some, you know, questions answered from staff before then, because I would hate to see this opportunity pass us by, the potential to pay off medical debt for over $12,000 Kent County residents, potentially at least $30 million, importantly using not county funds. And so I look forward to seeing, you know, what staff has to say in regards to this, and I look forward to being at the Finance Committee on Tuesday as a member of the public and coming before you all next Thursday. Thank you.
Commissioner DeBoer.[1759.41]